Okay, well, we have a hearing, so I think we should probably just get started. It's 6:02. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Ed, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Sure. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting in the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID 875-7667-3275, and use the password 270081. Hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cellphone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number is 646-558-8656, or by watching public access TV Charter Spectrum, Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectmen@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy and public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thank you very much, Ed. Before we start, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that attended the Memorial Day commemoration yesterday. The rain held off. I just want to say thank you to Mark Nichols, who's the American Legion Commander, as well as Richard LeClark, who was the previous American Legion Commander, for all of the help with putting also the flowers on the veteran graves. And just want to say thank you to Police Chief Illingsworth, Fire Chief Workman, and everybody that attended. It was nice. Next year, we're looking forward to having, get back to having a parade, but it was a nice ceremony, and Reeves will put on the graves at the ceremony, at the cemetery and also in the center of town. So, thank you for everyone who helped with that. Does anybody else have any other announcements or anything before we start?
Just one thing. I would have to send you the link, but the church is doing kind of a documentary project on basically trying to figure out how the pandemic has affected people in town. And so they have put out a thing on their website where they're collecting essays of 150 words, not terribly long, but just something about how it affected you personally during this pastime. And they're trying to collect these and have a kind of a booklet that might be eventually part of something that goes to the Historical Society. This has been a historic event for all of us, I think, and hopefully, once in a lifetime. And so they're trying to document some of that. So I will share that information, or you might find it on the church website. We'll get it out further. I don't have the website handy in front of me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Anyone else have any announcements? Just to remember that the annual town meeting is on the 12th of June at Labree Field. It's at 9 o'clock. Originally, it was going to be 10, but it's been changed because of the number of articles. And also, we want to make sure that people don't get too hot. Hard to believe that that would happen today, but nonetheless, 9:00 AM for the annual town meeting, and the election is on the 22nd of June. So just want to make sure those dates are clear and hope everybody participates. So at this time, we're just 6:07. I'm going to officially open up the hearing. I see we have Nick here from EverSource. And so there is a petition for a poll hearing. And I don't know, Ed, do you want to provide us with the information, or should I just open it up and have Nick explain to us what the hearing is?
You've opened it up. I will read the legal notification for it.
Okay.
Town of Southampton Select Board Petition for Poll and Locations. The Southampton Select Board will hold a hearing at 6:05 PM on June 1, 2021 via remote meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions. On the petition by N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to relocate and/or install poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Locations: Install one jointly owned P-20/10M at 61 Gun Road approximately 150 feet westerly of existing pole P-20/10, and approximately 20 feet northerly of the center line of Gun Road. Reason to provide a new underground service for 61 Gun Road. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the field plan therewith and made apart hereof marked 6A034044. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may participate in the remote meeting at the time designated above via Zoom. Computer, smart device, video, and audio, zoom.us/join. Phone, audio only, 646-558-8656. Meeting ID 875-7667-3275. Password 270081. N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, and Verizon New England, Inc., Maureen Groden, Chair, Select Board, Town of Southampton.
Thank you very much, Ed. Nick, do you want to give any more information about this poll relocation?
Sure, I can speak up.
Go ahead.
Ed, you nailed it. That was a good speech.
That's taken right from the petition itself, so I just got to put it into the legal notice.
All right. So, the purpose of this poll is for a new house for 61 Gun Road. We're not really adding anything new. This poll is going to pretty much intercept the existing lines that are already there, but they need a poll to dig up to for the underground service. So we're not putting really any new wire up above. Just, this new poll is going to intercept the existing, and it's right next to the driveway of the new house. That's pretty much all I got, unless anyone has any questions.
Anybody in the Select Board have any questions?
No.
Is there anybody from the public or any butters that have any questions? No?
Don't hear anybody.
Okay.
I don't see any hands, because everyone's muted. And of course, most of the people are on audio only, so we can't see them.
Okay. But nobody has raised their hand to speak about it?
Or raised the hand through the Zoom application.
Okay. Hearing, no questions from the public, open Select Board. Would you like to make a motion to approve this poll relocation?
Close the motion to close the public hearing and a vote first, please.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Okay, Francine and then Chris, all in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fall's aye.
Not my birthday yet.
Rowan, aye.
Matt, you good with closing the meeting, the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, all right. So then I guess we vote who approved the relocation.
Yeah, motion to approve. We'll need in a second.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the location for this new poll at 61 Gun Road.
I'll second it.
Okay. Chris and then Francine, any comments, questions? All in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fall's aye.
Rowan, aye.
Okay. Nick, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nick.
Take care.
Okay, moving right along. We have one resignation, Lucy Dalton, from the Bylaws Review Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll move to accept the resignation from the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Francine and then Matt, any comments, questions? All in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Fall's aye.
Rowan, aye.
So just to mention, so thank you very much, Lucy, for serving on this committee up till now. There is, I believe, part of the either proposed or current bylaws of the Bylaw Committee that the town clerk would be an ex officio member. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, an ex officio non-voting member. Correct.
Okay. All righty, ready to move on to Select Board reports?
Sure.
Okay. Who would like to start?
I'll start. I don't know that we have too much. The main thing for CONCOM, just to fill everybody in, you recall more the issue with the trees on Strong Road?
Yep.
We're kind of leaning toward a house, as has been discussed and approved. The K&amp;J Tree Company did come out last week and remove the trees in question, and indeed found that one of them is severely compromised. So it definitely needed to come down, but that was done very quickly in one day last week with a little bit of police stopping traffic for a few minutes to get it done. And so that's all been taken care of. So we're very thankful that that took place, and CONCOM is thanking Select Board for moving along with that so quickly as well. Master Plan, we will have, I was going to get you the report probably for if we can put it on next meeting agenda. It depends on what we have going on, but we do have the final report of the master plan update from PVPC. So if we wanted to have that at some point to discuss further some of the priorities, I think you've had a synopsis of what they are, but we could discuss those a bit further going forward if you'd like to. But I'll have that report, and maybe, Ed, we could just have it up on the website. It's basically the final report. So we'll do that. And then, lastly, I think on the Grants Committee, we've been very busy. We've had a request in to work on submitting a grant to put in a, the remainder of a sidewalk section between High Street and Palmeri Meadow. So essentially, the strip right in front of the, in front of the cemetery. And we've had meetings with folks from the Cemetery Commission, Historical Commission, police, and highway, and also had some technical assistance from a group called StanTech. And we were able to turn around the application and get it submitted after a few efforts online when the state website crashed. We were able to get it in, and we'll know about that at the end of June. But it was a request for $90,000, and this would be a complete, to complete essentially the walking path connecting the northern network of sidewalks up by the school and around Palmeri Meadow, and be able to walk fully down on a sidewalk path all the way down to the center of town and to Conan Park. So this is the one little strip that was missing. And then the second grant, we've worked on with the Council on Aging to put in a request for a memory cafe, and that one has also been submitted. And we'll know about that not until September, but those are the last two. And the third one that we'll be working on is with the Parks Department. They're looking at doing some improvements around Conan Park, and that one is not due until mid-July, but we'll be working on that this month so we can get it in way before the deadline. It's a much more complicated grant application, so we'll be working on that. That's it.
Thanks very much, and thanks for all your work with the Grants Committee. It's wonderful. Matt or Francine?
Okay, I'll go. My report is short. On the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board, they met on May 27. And at that meeting, Art Lawrence, who was the author of the Classification and Compensation Plan Study based on data collected by the Jacob Study on our compensation, then he joined us to provide background information on how the data was collected, how was, and the analysis process that he used to develop the report to us and to create the recommended grade levels and salary scale that are proposed in his report. So that was a good, good piece of background, since no one on the current PQB was on at the time that that work was being done. So it brought everybody along, and then also shared some background documents that we didn't have. So that's going to help us along as we develop a scale that is, that corresponds to this study and to the, you know, the plan that we adopted a couple of meetings ago. We also at that meeting, and at the meeting on May 20, approved several PCFs which are on the agenda for tonight. And then finally, the Bylaw Committee that was meeting had to be canceled because we lacked a quorum on, at our last scheduled meeting. We don't have a date for another one yet. And again, I'm just going to ask people out there in the public, we do need volunteers to work with us on the Bylaw Review Advisory Committee. So we would be very interested in anyone who's interested in joining us and doing the work. And I'll be happy to talk with that one who wants to know a little bit about what it is that we do. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Matt, any updates from the schools?
I don't have any updates. They haven't had a meeting since we last.
Matt, can I ask you a question? I was told, I don't know if it happened at the time, that we had a meeting the same night as the local school committee. Did they vote on the budget differently than since we approved the budget? Like, did they vote where they would cut in the event or that the override doesn't pass? Like, did they come up with a budget that matches ours for the?
I'm not sure. I can get follow-up on that. I don't know. I didn't ask.
Okay. All right.
But I was not there when that took place, so it would just be a guess.
Okay. All right. That would be good to know. For my updates, the Council on Aging meets tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock. And the only update Chris gave, basically the exciting news about the grant that went in to Highland Valley for the memory cafe. And thank you very much to the Council on Aging and to the Grants Committee for all your work in that grant. The Open Space Review Committee had a very successful series called the Neighborhood Outreach Program. It was four town-wide events, including two hikes and also two informational events down at Conan Park. I believe the educational programs are going to be up on our website if they're not already. East Hampton Media was nice enough to record those and actually video them. And there's a lot of real positive information that was shared at these events. There also the Barnes-Aquifer brochure, which was approved by the CPC to put in front of the voters as an educational brochure. That was on the agenda, and that's one of the things that we're asking for funding. Well, CPC is asking for funding that Open Space pull that together. Charlie McDonald in particular, it's done a lot of work on that. And then also, there's a lot of discussion about the Pollinator Garden. There's been a lot of good suggestions, a lot of good gardeners giving suggestions on various plants. And there was a number of discussions about locations, particularly the water commissioners, the property that the town purchased on Palmeri Meadow Road. So anyway, there's more discussion going on about that. And I think that's it. There was also some, if you remember, there were benches that were made for the trail down at the Manhan Meadows Trail, and there were volunteers that got together and helped. Chris, do you know offhand, are they already on the trail? Are they already in the property?
Yes, they are. They went down about a week or so ago. They carried them down. They were made by the Smith-Vogue students, and a bunch of volunteers carried them down in pieces and assembled them on-site. So they're there on-site. And yeah, I forgot to mention it, and maybe Ed will fill us in, but we do, you know, we're still waiting for the final, final thoughts in terms of our contractor for the Manhan Meadows work. We did have somebody bid on that, and I know they've had a chance to check them out a little bit more, so hopefully we'll be able to move forward.
Great. Thank you. So that's it from Open Space. The Board of Health met. They met the same time we had met the last time. I had asked them to address the issue of the mosquito spraying, and they had given us a recommendation on that. There was a deadline that was the end of May, so it was very difficult to pull together an alternative plan. But there's been a lot of communication emails about that since. Also, at their meeting, they discussed the budget. They discussed COVID and the vaccination situation. They discussed some housing issues that had come up. And they have a meeting now scheduled. It was on the 9th. I think it switched to the 10th or vice versa. But they have a meeting coming up at Conan Park on, looks like the 10th, at 5:30. And that's it. Any questions for anybody? If not, let's go ahead and ask Ed to give us Town Administrator Report.
Sure. And it's fairly, fairly short. Just want to let you know that there was a pre-bid conference today over at Conan Park for the construction of the two pickleball courts. And those bids are due back on June 16, and will be opened that evening at the Park Commission meeting. And then we had the pre-bid conference for the East Street Bridge probably about a week and a half ago, and those bids are due back on June 15. And they will be opened that evening at 6:00 PM at the Select Board meeting. And that's all I have for my report. Everything else will get, be covered in the agenda items.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Ed? Okay. Thanks a lot, Ed.
You're welcome.
We have a presentation. It's not going to happen until later, but it's on the agenda as next. And it is with the Housing Authority. It'll be a joint meeting with the Housing Authority, and the speaker that's coming is going to come and speak to us about Housing Trust. I believe it's going to be around 8 o'clock, so it will most likely be at the end of the meeting. So I just want to let folks know, and we'll just keep moving on from here then. We don't have any quarterly reports, but old business, starting with the accountant position.
Yes, and we have opened up that search again for the town accountant, and it is live on Indeed. And I know I was talking to Francine today about both the accountant, the accountant position, and I know she's got some thoughts about that that she would like to cover also.
Sure. Thanks, Ed. Yeah, I was given a name through the Finance Committee of a company that actually did municipal work, municipal accounting work and lots of support systems around that. And the name of the company is Eric Kinsherf, and I believe it was a name that we had in, before, when we were looking for someone to do the closing of our, of last fiscal year's books. So anyway, I went on their website. I looked at what they offer to municipalities. I was, I was really impressed by the number of municipal governments that, and others, that use their services. They have a list. I just pulled off probably about 30. I'm not going to read all of them to you, but I will read you the ones that are in this area. There's Blandford, Southwick, Covington, Shrewsbury, that's not here, Chesterfield, and even Worthington, Brimfield, and Hampshire Regional uses them as well, the Hampshire Regional School District. So I put a call in to speak with someone. I thought it would be great to invite perhaps someone to give us a presentation, hopefully at our next meeting, so we can move on this, and give us some information about what type of service based, we'd have to have a conversation first. They'd have to understand what our needs are, but then do a presentation based on that. And, you know, and then we, along with a couple of other organizations that Ed had in mind, the Franklin Regional Council Government and the Pioneer Belly Planning Commission also apparently could be a resource for this. But, you know, in the absence of really being able to find suitable candidates, we have to be creative in seeking alternatives. And to me, looking perhaps maybe, I'm not even saying on a permanent basis, but even on a temporary basis, outsourcing this accounting function, really focusing on perhaps recruiting and bringing an assistant accountant up to speed, and perhaps making that a full-time position as opposed to a part-time position, and going with it just to get, just to get us moving in the right direction. So with that, I hope that these folks call me back sometime this week so they have information and we can plan the agenda. And Ed, if you want to contact the Franklin Regional Council Government and PVPC so that we could perhaps hear from all three at the same time, that might be a good way to make some comparison. While we continue to look or seek applicants, this is not to replace that, but really, we can't stand still.
Yeah, we absolutely can't. And thank you very much for doing that. And I think it's important to mention that, you know, this position was posted internally. Then it was posted up on Indeed. John Martin was part of the initial interviews with Ed Gibson. They identified two candidates. Both candidates were interviewed. There was not success in arriving at a contract with the preferred candidate, and the second candidate decided not to pursue this position. I then reached out to three people, and I met with Ed and a candidate who was, I was told, might be interested in interim position. He was retired, and just to have a conversation about whether that would even be the least bit feasible. And so there was a number of back and forths. And then in the end, I got close to tax time, which, as we know, was delayed into the middle of May, and didn't feel that there was the capacity to be able to do that on top of other obligations. So anyway, so we're back to posting on Indeed, other options. Any questions or any suggestions about the accountant, assistant accountant position?
Is it still up on the municipal accountant website as well? What is it, the MMA or whatever it is?
I'll have to go back and look again. I know, I know one of them was still up there, but let me go back and check.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems.
I think, I think it was the assistant accountant that was up on that, but I'll check and let you know.
Okay.
Both are on Indeed, though. Is that right, Ed?
Yes, they are both current on Indeed. And I did get a new application for the assistant accounting position today. So I will send that information along to you, Francine, and we can go over it together.
Okay, good.
And Francine, you're still willing and available to work with that on?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. And I think the Finance Committee also might, you know, there might be somebody who's interested as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, ready to move on to the? Okay, ready to move on to the Route 10 Bridge? Looks like they've prepared for it, but don't see any construction vehicles yet. What's happening?
I got word from the engineer today that whatever the shortages that they were facing as far as supplies go, that they have received, and they were out there doing some preliminary work today, and they're expected to start the actual construction work tomorrow.
Well, this is to take the water main that's in, currently in the river and lift it up and put it underneath the bridge itself, and it'll involve work from Brickyard to Fulmer and one lane road likely?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And it's going to start tomorrow. And how long is it expected to go to for?
The, the expected timeframe is, let's see, how do they put it? 90, 90 calendar days, which covers 50 actual working days. So three months overall.
Chris, did you want to have a question?
No, no, I was, that was the same question, but I couldn't remember how long it was supposed to take, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions about the, the water, the bridge there? Okay, we got a little bit of an update on the East Street Bridge. What more do you want to say about that, Ed? Anything?
That's pretty much about it for, for now. There has been, you know, decent interest in companies actually taking out the specifications and bid packages from VHB. So it'll be, I'm anxious to see what, how many companies and who actually returns the bids on the 15th and, and, you know, what, you know, what they come, come in at. And the construction materials are up since the beginning of COVID, and then the other side of that is availability of products, especially steel. So we'll see what they come back with, you know, for bid prices and also for time constraints.
And the good news is that we were authorized for the million dollars, was it a million dollars?
Million dollars for Mass Works was extended through fiscal year '22, that's correct.
Good news. So when the pre-bid meeting down at the bridge, how many, was John Furman there and also Randall? And were there people there that were bidders?
Yes, there was representation from either six or seven companies at the pre-bid construction meeting.
Good.
And probably the biggest question, because originally we had put it out, and there wasn't any penalties on it if they went over, but the original bid went out with a deadline to complete it for December of 2021. And just about everybody that was there because of the availability of steel had asked if that could be extended into 2022. So we did extend the deadline to complete the process to, I believe it's May 15th, 2022.
Telling you they're going to end up, I was going to say they're going to end up being bolted down at the same time, I know it. Both routes to town are going to be blocked. All right. Any questions about the East Street Bridge? Good to see these things moving along. All right, I guess go on to new business, COVID. So as you know, the governor opened up as of Saturday, businesses, people this weekend were going around, lots of people I saw without masks. Seemed like 50/50 from what I could tell in terms of in stores, stores have the right, bless you, to, to ask, request people wear masks. And then as of the 15th of June, the emergency is officially lifted by the governor. So what else, Ed? Obviously, we need to talk about opening up of Town Hall, senior center, and other public buildings.
Correct.
What else would you like to talk about as far as COVID right now?
I, I think, I think you covered a good deal of it. There's, you know, one of the pieces that's still hanging out there with the removal of the restrictions by the governor, and then the, what comes into play for the, the end of the emergency order on June 15th is, one of the pieces that goes away with that June 15th emergency order is, is the ability to utilize Zoom for public meetings. And at an MMA briefing that I attended about, probably a little over a week ago, it was, it was interesting, about 50, 50% of the attendees were, wanted to know when in-person meetings would start again, and the other 50% want to know if there was a way to still utilize Zoom going forward. So the governor did file a bill last week with the legislature to extend the use of Zoom past June 15th. So now that is in the, the legislature's, the House and the Senate's hands of what they want to do with that. So we'll see what comes out of, out of there, and I will keep you all posted on if Zoom goes away as of June 16th, or if in some way, shape, or form, it may continue for an additional period of time.
Now, what I read is that he wanted to extend it till September 1st.
That's, I, I heard, I heard into September. I did not see a date with it, but like I say, the other portion of that is what the, the House and the Senate are willing to do with it. And I've already had a couple of our, our boards and committees ask if they could still use Zoom past June 15th, so.
So really, whether we're able to or not will depend on what the governor does, correct? It's not like we independently can say we want to be able to continue Zoom. We are obligated to meet in person if that's what's voted by the governor.
And, yeah, and the House and the Senate, correct.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
How do, do we know yet relative to the opening of the Town Hall?
What I can, can tell you is, you know, the governor's order as far as the restrictions came off as of Saturday, the 29th, just in time for Memorial Day weekend. There is now not a mask mandate, but a mask advisory, which basically says that, other than under certain circumstances such as transportation and a few others, that individuals that have been fully vaccinated don't have to wear masks unless they choose to, and that individuals who have not been vaccinated as of yet are advised to wear, advised to wear masks. I did, at the last department head meeting, did ask the department heads how they felt about it. Seems like just about all of our departments are at, at the point that, that they know it's coming. They're, they're willing to be open to the public again, whenever the select board decides to. You know, some of the things that we had discussed for that is, you know, you know, for, for our employees, they can continue to wear masks, or wear masks when individuals come into their offices. Everyone concurred that the plexiglass barriers that we have up should, should stay up, because not only are they protection against COVID, but as we get into the cold and flu season, their protection from that. We have some departments that said that they would continue contract tracing, so I would probably suggest that, you know, at least in the beginning, when we open up, that we continue to do the contract tracing, whether it's, you know, at the main door in general or in the individual offices as people come in to get information and visit those particular offices. You know, then, then from the air of talking to, you know, some of my peers, as, as far as opening goes, there are different, shall we say, stages, varieties, what have you, stuff hardly seem to be slowly, I won't say slowly, but implementing, opening different buildings at different stages. Some of them are opening with, you know, no mask, no general mask requirements, that that's basic, a suggestion or an option rather than a requirement. One of, although one of the town administrators I was speaking with, which is from the town of Southwick, they had some offices which were open to the public already, but they're going to be opening the rest of their offices. However, in Southwick, their health director is actually putting a requirement on the individuals that come into the Town Hall there that they have to wear masks. So there, there are different, different positions and provisions being implemented.
So I, are you, do you want to talk? I saw this as an agenda item further down for our specific, but just as background, there was an article in the Gazette today that listed several of the towns and what they were doing about Town Hall opening. You want me to give that now, or?
I mean, are people okay with that? We're talking about it.
Sure, let's, let's talk about it.
Okay. I mean, it's what Ed said about the state June 15th, and then hopefully, it may be virtually until September 1st. Northampton is opening its offices on July 6th, and they have agreed to conduct their meetings via Zoom until September 1st, I guess pending the outcome of legislative vote. East Hampton is opening its offices on July 1st, and they plan on having hybrid meetings as long as they had, which would be in-person and virtual, as long as they had a quorum physically present at, at the, at the in-person portion of the meeting. Amherst opened today, they were requiring masks, they, in their Town Hall, they only had a single point of, of entry, and their plan was to continue to meet virtually for an indefinite period of time. Holyoke also opened today, their Town Hall, their city hall, but they did so with, with restrictions, but I don't know what those restrictions are. But, so, everybody is in and around, you know, I would say by, by mid, mid-July, it looked like everybody was planning on being open at this point in time.
Yeah, and Westfield, and Westfield had opened probably about a month ago.
Okay.
About a month ago. Holyoke, what was the one before Holyoke that you said? Holyoke's today, what was the town before that?
Amherst was also today, but it required masks.
Oh, but they're requiring masks?
Yes.
So it sounds like some of these towns are going ahead, going ahead, jumping ahead and making a decision around meeting before the governor put out any kind of guidance, right?
Should look like.
Ed, can I just ask you, all the plexiglass is up for offices that require it, and the cleaning supplies are adequate, and there's no concerns around custodial support?
No, and then one of the things that I had mentioned, mentioned is, you know, at least for the immediate future, I believe we need to keep up the, the cleaning and the disinfecting, disinfecting schedule that, you know, we have been using, that I don't see any point in, you know, backing off on that. I think, I think that's important too, as we go into the restrictions coming off, emergency order ending, but the public coming back in.
Is there any impact that the date might have relative to the fact that the election is on the 22nd? I mean, I'm assuming people are coming in the building for that, right?
Correct. I mean, I don't, I mean, basically, we can probably open to the public at any time. You know, I probably don't see, you know, much of a, much of a serious point in probably, you know, prolonging that much longer than June 16th when, when the emergency order ends.
Okay, is that a recommendation?
You could say that's my recommendation, yes.
Okay.
And I just want to mention, the only town that specifically mentioned a senior center was Northampton, and they're not announcing a date that that would be open simply because their senior center is their vaccination center, and they're still running that program. So once that ends, they'll open. But I, I saw nothing from the other towns that said they were going to open senior centers at a different time than they were opening the rest of their, their public facilities.
And there's no restrictions to the number of people that can gather indoors, starting the 16th?
I have not seen any restrictions on that number after, on or after June 16th.
My guess is this is the biggest cohort of vaccinated people, and people would self-select whether they would want to attend certain things, I would imagine.
Right.
So what other thoughts do people have?
Well, I'm just wondering, with the election on the 22nd in town, which is a Tuesday, would we want to open up the Monday prior, or wait until the election is done and then open up the following day? Or, I mean, I don't know if anything makes any particular sense. I see Lucy's hanging in here. Lucy's in, if she could, she's muted.
Yeah. And, and I was thinking maybe wait until after the election, just so they can have one good cleaning.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Following, following the election.
Yeah, that was a thought.
Matt, any, any ideas or any suggestions?
I'm happy to open up Town Hall. I don't, I don't see the issue, honestly.
I am too.
Can I?
Everything else is open.
I think Robert actually raised his hand. I'll ask, hear from Robert and Lucy, actually.
Yeah, Lucy did too.
Okay. I can't see Lucy on here. Did you have a?
Here.
Yeah, she's top.
Okay, there.
Sorry, I have my hat on.
Yeah, that's why, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Lucy.
Um, I am comfortable with opening up the Town Hall, not after the election, before the election, I'm fine with that. We had five elections last year, even during the height of COVID, and the elections ran very well. You know, we're sanitizing the booths, we're sanitizing, you know, people's hands when they walk in the door, and, you know, we are going to still maintain six feet distance if, you know, needed. So we are going to follow protocols for safety measures. So, you know, I already talked to Ed about my department with opening up the Town Hall, and I am, you know, in favor of keeping up the glass, plexiglass. I told him that I was going to contact Trace in my office, my own form, and I'm, we wiped down our counter, you know, anyways. So I'm, just that's my thought about the elections. I am fine with that. We have the stand-up hand sanitizers, the portables that we received that we're going to have, and we've gotten about 30 mail-in applications, that's it so far, and I think people are ready to, you know. I also did tell Ed that we can have a sign that says, you know, masks are recommended, not required, if we needed to do that, because I'm fully vaccinated and so is my, the assistant. So, but that would be up to, you know, the town. so, but that would be up to, you know, the town.
Lucy, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I just had a question for you and I, it disappeared, hang on a second. I'll think about it, who else?
No, no problem.
He said Robert had his hand.
I wanted to ask you, did you, you said you had your own case tracing form, isn't there one that Jerry had for the entire building?
He's on mute again.
Yes, there is, let's see.
Okay, so you just had one for your office, but it's the same one that's universally used, right?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a copy of that for my office.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Robert, maybe, I'm not sure.
Robert had his hand up before, I thought.
There he is, there he is.
Robert Floyd, 166 College Highway. I did not raise my hand, but I do appreciate the opportunity to be recognized, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So I think, personally, I think that keeping up the plexiglass, I think, opening it up, you know, on the 16th and continuing Zoom meetings would be my vote. Or the ability to do Zoom meetings.
So, continue to Zoom, do Zoom meetings for?
Or a hybrid, if I mean, I'm not going to.
Or to, for the boards to choose either in-person meetings or Zoom meetings if the Zoom meetings are still available.
Yeah, I mean, what would the hybrid look like? I know I've had some difficulty at work doing some hybrids when there's too many people on this, in a room, there's some feedback and it makes it problematic from a audio standpoint, but it sounds like a lot of the other towns are doing a hybrid. In other words, if people are able to go in there, great, and if not, then they'd accept Zoom, I'm assuming that's what they mean by hybrid. So that sounds like a good idea to me.
I was thinking a hybrid being more the fact that you could either choose to utilize Zoom or choose to utilize in-person.
Oh, but not, not both at the same time?
But not both at the same time, I couldn't agree on that, but that's the way I was looking at that.
Okay, well, we have to wait anyway until the, our next meeting's the 15th, it's going to be before the day of the 16th if people are in agreement with that. So I don't know that we have to decide that right now until we hear what the governor ends up doing. What do you all think, Chris, Francine?
Well, I think before COVID, right, we had tried to put in a somewhat of a procedural policy, right, talking about boards and committees that could have somebody who was having difficulty making the meeting time, they were on the way home from work or something happened that they could chime in via phone or some other method, as long as they were able to be heard by the committee present in person. And just that the notion was that that couldn't be a regular occurrence, it was supposed to be more the exception, but we were trying to allow for some people to, to be able to attend the meeting, you know, recognizing that they're, you know, racing home from work in time to maybe get dinner and get to a meeting at the same time. So I think a lot of people have really appreciated having Zoom, quite honestly, I think it's made it somewhat easier for, for several people. So we have something in place, but that's only for like the, the, kind of the off, off chance. It's, I think we still wrote it as having a quorum present in person, if I remember what we put down. So that would really only allow for maybe one or two people to be able to call in if, if needed, as needed, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that totally answers everybody's needs, but we have something kind of drafted like that. But, I don't know, I guess I would sort of, I know we have to wait for, you know, the decision on the legislature, I think I would kind of leave it up to the different boards, there's, excuse me, boards and committees, I mean, some are already meeting, you know, in person at Conant Park and, you know, whatever. I think to the extent they wanted to do that and just publicize their meetings as they need to for open meeting law.
Somebody wants to make a motion?
I don't know. Matt, what do you think?
I, I, I agree with what you just said, Chris, I mean, yeah. Yeah, I, 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 it's definitely, this has definitely made it easier, for sure. No question.
Yeah.
I guess I have to ask, is there a problem if we were to decide tonight to open up one June 16th?
As far as what?
Prefer to wait until the 15th deadline comes and we have a meeting and then?
I think that would be cutting it kind of close because with a 48-hour length of a meeting, I'm comfortable with, you know, I mean, I think I'm comfortable with saying the town hall can open up on the 16th. And that's a recommendation Lucy just said that, you know, they've successfully carried out the election with, in the middle of COVID. So, you know, so long as the case tracing still happens and plexiglass is up and the cleaning's happening, I think it might be a separate issue as far as the meetings. So if we wanted to say that as far as town hall right now, you know.
I think open, open to the public, I think on the 16th is, is fine. Does that, that would apply to the Council on Aging and the library as well, or are those separate decisions?
I think the, what I heard from the senior center is that they're open, ready to open anytime.
And the library, anybody here? No?
I think, I think you could say that, you know, if, if they want to open fully on the 16th, they can. If their board of trustees, you know, deems otherwise and wants to do a, shall we say, a slower transition, and that's acceptable too. The last time I had talked with, you know, Barbara, I think they were thinking of doing a slower transition, like maybe opening a couple, a couple days, opening fully a couple days, a week and continuing with like curbside or browsing at some of the other times, so.
You're on mute.
Still on mute. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, patrons on the library can visit on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 6:00 and Wednesdays from 1:00 to 4:00 and starting June 5th, which, you know, we are, they're open on Saturdays and the hours on Saturdays are 10:00 to 1:00.
Well, I think I would favor making a motion to open up town hall and any, any other public offices that wish to be open as of June 16th, but pulled off on determining anything about, you know, whether it's Zoom or in-person, in-person meetings until we know a little bit more. I think, you know, I think many, many committees, I think, that I'm involved would, would like to go as long as possible on Zoom, as long as we can stretch it, it's just easier, I think, for so many people, especially a lot of our, our working folks and a lot of our younger people that we're trying to attract to some of our boards and committees, it's just a lot easier for them that are, you know, juggling many family responsibilities as well as trying to get home for a meeting. So the longer we can hold off on requiring in-person meetings, I would favor that if we have the ability to do that.
Okay, I think we need to, the motion then on the table is to open up the town hall on the 16th of June and it does not include a directive in terms of meetings right yet until the governor says. The difficulty is that our next meeting is the 15th of June and so we can continue and then we can make a decision perhaps at that particular meeting once we know what the governor's mandate is.
Right.
So is there a second to Chris's motion then?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Chris and I.
All's aye.
All in aye.
And Groden aye. And I do agree that case tracing and not just some departments, but all departments would be a good idea. You know, there are, you know, the least vaccinated people are the people that are younger than 12. So I just feel that, you know, when it comes to library and when it comes to a number of places where people would, might be coming in with young children and such, I just think it'd be a good idea to continue case tracing. If there's nothing else, we can talk about the CARES Act.
Chris and I are going to sit down either tomorrow or Thursday and go through what we have as far as what departments have, have ordered or been invoiced for versus what's approved, to figure out what might be, what might be remaining and then turn around and if, depending on what's remaining, if there are other needs, requests that funds be transferred from items which were approved but haven't been purchased or the purchases were less than the original request amount, be transferred into other needs so we can spend, we can spend all those funds.
Yeah, and I think we've got until, well, they had said originally until June and I think now it's maybe until the end of September or sometime that we can actually draw down if there's any money still remaining. I think, you know, we've still got a little bit of flexibility to do some reprogramming, which is why we want to jump on this, this week and see what we know. It looks like several departments have, I mean, most everybody has gotten what they, you know, had intended to, except, you know, many of them have not spent as much as they thought at one point in time. So I think we will have some money to reprogram. I've gone through the various payment vouchers, vendor warrants and tried to list down the various invoices per department, so I know, you know, vendor X belongs to the library or to the police department or whatever and have kind of made a separate spreadsheet on those that I'm going to go down and go through with Ed and then we'll talk with the various department heads on that. I actually, I see, I have one question now that I see Randall's on here and Ed, you probably know as well, the order we had on, was it the, I'm blanking it out, it wasn't the hot water heater, it was the what?
Generator.
Generator, thank you. That's in play, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's been ordered, that's one of the, and Randall can answer this too, but that's one of those items that due to supply, going to take three or four months to actually get, but that, that has been, been ordered with Highway Garage.
Okay, that was just one of the big, big ones that I had not seen an invoice for, but other than that, I think most departments have done really well in terms of what they were intending to, intending to purchase. And I think as, and interestingly, even if we have money to reprogram, I think it's going to take a little bit of a challenge maybe to reprogram some of this as we get kind of on the other side of COVID, if you will. I mean, it's a, it's a harder argument to make in some cases as we're starting to move out of, you know, the, the urgency or emergency. So we'll have to really just sort of see what, what other needs there may be, but we've certainly got to still justify it according to the COVID, you know, guidelines, so.
Correct.
But we will work on that this week.
I have a couple of questions. I didn't see anywhere where it said that it's now, the deadline is actually September for June, but that's, that's a definite.
That's for the reprogramming part, we still haven't got, we still got until December to spend everything.
Right.
But there was some.
For things, was there any item that any department head had asked for that wasn't able to be funded, not because it wasn't COVID related or not because of any, you know, disqualification on the part of the CARES Act folks, but because that there wasn't enough funds, that too many, funds were already committed to other things? Or anybody that didn't get something that they had hoped for? I thought Chief Workman had requested some things that he did not get.
Yeah, but those items were, were turned down.
Okay, they were turned down by the qualifications or whatever, the requirement?
Right.
Okay, what about, did you ever find out FEMA originally was going to reimburse it 75% and then they came back and said they were reimbursing at 100%? Do you know how much money that freed up?
I'll have, I'll have to go back and look, but it should have freed up a decent amount.
Because that should be able to be reprogrammed then if our reimbursement just increased.
Correct.
On the FEMA items, yeah.
Right.
Have you talked to department heads to see or are you waiting for a dollar amount first to determine what additional items they might want?
I wanted to get, get at least a ballpark of a dollar amount first.
Okay. Anything else on the CARES Act? Have they talked about, you know, I got an email today about another funding thing, Chris, I don't know if you're familiar with this or Ed, it literally came in 10 minutes before this meeting and it was applying for coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. I had not seen that before, it came in literally at 5:35 today. Is that something that either of you are familiar with?
Was it through DLS or no?
Well, DLS, correct.
That might have been the one that talked a little bit about the reprogramming deadline, but.
All righty, so it's the same?
It may be, I'm not positive, yeah.
All righty.
So.
Anything else about CARES Act, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you both for your help with that. The next is the American Rescue Act. This has been frustrating, 1.8 million dollars, but we don't know, now they're talking about separating out into two payments over two years, but we don't know what we can spend it on even now.
Well, that's, that's what they had originally talked about and it's interesting because, yeah, we still haven't received a great deal of detail of what we can spend it on, you know, other than some of those programs that we talked about at the last meeting of, you know, improvements to sewer or water infrastructure or under certain circumstances, broadband expansion for, to serve those that are underserved or not served currently, but still haven't seen a great deal of, like I say, detail for everyday, you know, needs from them. And then what probably was even more frustrating for me is that, you know, they kept saying that of that original 1.8 million, which was supposed to come to us over two fiscal years in two different amounts, but could be spent over four, is when the, when we received the sheets confirming the amounts for the different towns and cities, Southampton's amount is $649,000 and they don't tell you if that's for, to cover both fiscal years or that's for this fiscal year or that's all you're going to get now. So that's another thing I'm trying to find out more detail on, so.
Well, it sounds short either way you look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it's like they, you know, they're supposed to send you, you know, more additional information to make things easier and then you get it and it's like, it opens up even more questions than before they provided it.
Well, this is, you know, this reminds me of the CARES Act, you know, we're waiting, 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 thinking that things have to be purchased and bought within a two-week period of time, then they open it up and they keep pushing out the deadlines. So this is just one of those things that difficult to get answers to. Now, wasn't there a webinar or is that still on the calendar?
They've, they've actually had a couple of different webinars. I know I've, I've, I've attended a couple, I think Chris attended one last week that I couldn't make, so.
Still no, for a man. Still not a lot of specificity, no. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of government doublespeak, frankly.
That's the same thing I've seen on, you know, the webinars.
Yeah.
Whether they were from, you know, through the MMA, through the National League of Cities, you know, what have you.
Yeah, so it's all coming from Treasury and so, you know, the US Treasury has got to give the right guidance to the various states and then the states have got to pass it on to the municipalities and I don't know where the logjam is, but it's definitely not moving very fast because everybody seems to think that this is, you know, wonderful, it's been going on for a couple of months already since the big plan was announced. Well, here we are, still empty. Well, here we are, still empty-handed. So I don't know how we get to know more about this. I guess we could talk to our representatives to see if they know more. But other than that, I don't know how to shake anything loose.
I mean, the two pieces I know so far are, okay, we're going to get $649,000 and some change, and we're supposed to have that money from the state within 30 days. So those are the two pieces I'm sure of.
Yeah.
Well, as much as I've loved to elicit some information from department heads and from you, Ed, and also have a little wish list discussion, I think it's premature because we don't know how the money can be used. So what I'd be very willing to do, if you'd like me to, is to write an email to John Vialis and to Lindsay Sabadosa, and just ask them what we might be able to expect, and if there are any, when do they expect criteria to be out in terms of how the money can be spent? Where did we get, where did we get, where did we get the 1.8 figure? That was on, that was when we initially provided with the information about the funding, right?
Correct. That was, that came from, that was the estimates out of Washington.
Okay. Okay. Would you like me to do that? Would you like me to write to them and just find out when we're going to, if they know when we can expect to get some funding and some criteria so that it's not all last minute?
I think it would be a great, great idea, Randy. I mean, I, you know, I don't know whether they assume that we all know something, and maybe some things come out that we're not aware of, but I don't think so. I mean, I haven't seen anything either. And it's just kind of strange that we're just not getting more clarity. And I, you know, I was thinking, first of all, maybe they're waiting to the new fiscal year, but that doesn't make any sense because it's, you know, if it's federal funding, that's on a totally different fiscal year. So that doesn't matter. They end in September. So that's even worse.
Yeah. Moving slowly in my mind.
Yeah, no, it definitely is. So, yeah, I think it wouldn't hurt to jot them a note and see if they can shake a tree loose and see what happens.
Or at least give us a little bit more information than we already have.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Anything else on any of the funding?
No.
Nope. Next then is the review of the ATM warrant for the select board reading designation. So we have another meeting. No, we don't. Actually, this is the last meeting before the actually town meeting. So I would imagine that we would go back to doing what we were used to doing and take turns reading the motions. We don't read the motions for the CPC. Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
We don't read the citizen petition, or we don't read the CPC ones that's done by CPC. But for the rest of them, I imagine we, we would just take turns reading the articles like we usually do. And in terms of, on the last draft I saw of the warrant, it didn't specify which ones the finance committee approved or didn't, and it didn't say who the spokesperson was for the actual article.
No, that gets added for the version with the motions and the summaries, which I'm working on now.
Okay. I mean, do you want to just agree that we just do what we usually do and share them, or?
Okay. Yeah, Chris had this idea that maybe she and I should split up the bylaw amendments just simply because we've been on it. But if it's just reading the motions, honestly, anybody can do it. It doesn't deserve any explanation.
And I guess I forget what we talked about. If we were going to put all the general bylaws, were we going to do them individually, or are we going to vote on them as a group, or pairs, or triples, or something? I forgot what we had talked about on that.
I believe that might be a Robert question. Robert, do you want to chime in on that? I don't know that we decided that. I know they're all put together on the warrant.
Right, yeah. But, you know, the motions themselves will be much clearer than the, you know, delete here, take this instead, you know, the way that the actual text is of the draft of the bylaw. So I wasn't sure if we had made a decision about treating each one of them individually, or grouping the general bylaws together as one, one item. I, when we were talking about the length of the, of the warrant.
Since everyone, excuse me, is going to have the articles and the motions, there's no need to read the whole article. The motions are abbreviated, and we're going to handle each article as it is and not combine articles.
Okay, okay.
And actually, that's more smooth.
Yep, that's fine. So whatever, whatever anybody wants, and we can either alternate, or Francine and I can divvy up that section on the, you know, the eight or nine bylaws that are there, if you want, however you want to do it, it's fine.
Yeah, but I mean, if everybody's just reading motions, we could, we could keep it the way we've done it in the past.
I think we should do it the way we did it in the past, only because I don't want, I mean, you both are on the bylaws committee. So I just think, you know, we voted as a board to support these bylaws. They went to our attorney for endorsement and such. So I think that, you know, it's, we should just do, my vote is just do what we typically do, is just put on the line and take turns.
Fine.
That's fine. Yep.
Okay. Do we want to say anything more about the actual warrant itself? We all got our final copy of it signed. Anything else to say about it? Any questions about it?
Robert?
Just a reminder that the town moderator and information session is this Thursday, June 3rd, 7 o'clock. And it's live thanks to East Hampton Media on Channel 191.
Great. Thank you very much for doing that.
Cheers.
Yep. Okay, I guess we're good to go on the warrant. Let's talk about the annual town meeting update and preparations.
And we should be pretty much all set to go. All the vendors have been confirmed. Saturday, June 12th starts at 9:00 AM, check-in starts at 8:00 AM for the voters. The chairs and tables and the audio equipment will be delivered sometime between 6:30 AM and 7:00 AM. We are going to set up like we did last year with the chairs that will basically provide for social distancing. Masks are an option or suggested. They are not required. There are a few things that still need to find or get volunteers for. I'm going to, I'm going to pick up some water for the cooling station. Still need to find somebody that's got like a 10 by 10 canopy to put over the, the check-in table where the clerk and the election workers are. Don't know if anybody's got any coolers that they are willing to provide to keep ice and the water in for the cooling station.
Yeah.
And, and other than that, oh, and if you think we need parking attendants this year, we'll have to find a couple of parking attendants. But everything else has been arranged.
Robert, anything to add?
No, I'm quite thrilled that the team that we had from last year has kicked in, and we're ready to go. And I just mentioned Tammy has a hand up.
Yep, I was just about to call on her. Yep. Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. Where'd she move to? Want to click on the unmute, and she moved down three rows.
Sorry, Tammy Wildonis, 298 College Highway. I am working on getting at least one attendant for the parking lot. I just had asked, do we have the orange protection vest? Or is that something I need to work out with the police department, fire department?
For one, I could probably find a yellow or orange one from, from the highway department. So.
I will have one person there directing traffic to make sure they go on the correct. But I'm still waiting for information to put out on Facebook.
Okay.
So once you have something on the town website, a dropdown, then I can get it out onto that.
Okay. I can get, I can get that to you.
What about a porta potty?
We'll, we'll end up having two. There's a regular one there already, and I have ordered a handicapped one for that weekend.
Robert, you going to be up on the truck again?
Yes, probably with the chair sitting down, because this may go into two sessions.
Can people bring like an umbrella or something to cover themselves with the heat?
I see why not.
It's, it's a good idea, but it blocked someone's view behind them. It's a trade off. And if there's wind, it will blow away and injure someone.
Well, maybe, but I.
Like when we, how we grew up on, on the beaches.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking, if, if it really does turn out to be a very hot day, we're not going to find people sitting there in the hot sun for two to three hours, I don't think. So.
I'll be, I'll be ready to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting until the time's certain the next morning.
Okay. Any other questions about the actual day of the meeting, meeting? If the weather looks iffy, at what point will it be called off and by whom?
I volunteer to do that again, and it's, and it's usually by, I'll say, you know, 6:30 in the morning, if not earlier.
Okay. I imagine you'll all be in touch with Robert and then possibly do a code red.
I relegated it to.
Huh?
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll do a red banner on the, the town website, and I should be able to do a remote code red also.
Okay. So the rain date is the following day on the 13th?
Yes.
Tammy? Did you want to say something, Tammy? Oh, you're muted. Okay. Lucy, did you want to say something too?
Um, how early is that connect, the, that code red message coming out? I hope it's not coming out at 6:30 to all the townspeople.
Thank you.
It really depends on what mood I'm in that morning. I've got to be up. No, usually, you, you, usually I will record it at like 6:30 and make the call. I will do the red banner. That's the first thing. But I would send it out, you know, later, like probably around 7:30 or so, maybe 8:00. Well, don't, don't forget, check-in starts at 8:00. So I wouldn't do it any later than 8:00 AM.
If it's raining.
It's raining, but the question is when, if it's iffy, you know, and the weather says one.
That's the hard, that's the hard part about it.
That's why I always, you know, superintendents have a tough job when it comes to things like that.
Yeah, because slight overcast could mean that it's not going to be as sunny, and Gabe will get everything done.
Exactly. I mean, it was, it was like the, the special town meeting. It basically rained all night, and I looked at weather maps, you know, continuously. And, you know, it, it looked, and I don't believe the weatherman or the weather or the radar maps all that much, but it looked like it was going to let up, you know, that morning beforehand. And it did pretty much about the time the radar maps, you know, looked like it would. So, you know, other, other than the fact that it was still dark out at 6:30 in the morning, and I couldn't see the puddles at the, at the entrance, and, you know, out in the outfield and whatever, it worked out pretty good, but.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, some of it's science, some of it's guesswork.
Okay, Lucy, did you want to say something?
I just had one question. Ed, if it does get canceled that morning, do you have an alternate place for the equipment that's going to be delivered to the ball field, the chairs and whatnot?
Yeah, well, ba- basically, I would, like I say, I'll be making that call early in the day, and I would just call Party Patrol Rentals and tell them not to bring them until the next day. And as far, as far as the, the audio equipment, that's in a trailer that, that's on my list of calls. And I would just call and basically say, okay, we're going with the rain date of tomorrow. So, you know, don't, don't head out here.
Okay. And the Lions Club already changed the date, I mean, the time on the Lions Club sign. I asked them to do that last week, so they did that last week. And then I changed it on our sandwich board sign. And I made a town clerk announcement that's been changed. So that's all.
Great. Thank you very much for doing that. Did we cover everything? And I imagine the fire department EMTs and the cooling station will have some folks available in case there's any medical emergencies?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll go a shared station with the police department.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So if there's no other questions about the town meeting, you can go to the door-to-door solicitation moratorium. So if you remember correctly, we had voted to put in place a door-to-door moratorium from any solicitors. And that is currently in place. We got a communication from the attorney of Trinity Solar, whose name is Joshua Fisher, and I believe I sent that to you. Basically, they were just hoping that we would address and, and the moratorium. That information was shared with Jerry Swanson, who then followed up with an email recommendation. And I will read, I think the email from Jerry Swanson was actually in the packet.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Justed last time, and the, the recommendation was that we do in fact ask the attorney to send us a copy of their requirements for all Trinity Solar personnel that had to do with COVID safety. So we got a copy of that in our packet. And what Jerry had said is that she reviewed the Trinity Solar Health and Safety Protocol. The protocol submitted by Trinity has no end date. It was effective as of May 19, 2020, until further notice. Since not everyone in Southampton has been vaccinated, and we do not know if all the Trinity employees have been vaccinated, I would recommend that the Trinity Health and Safety Protocol remain in effect, not the moratorium, but the Health and Safety Protocol remain in effect until September 30, 2021, should your board decide to rescind the door-to-door solicitation moratorium, to rescind it. So comments, questions, motions?
Well, I wouldn't lift the moratorium until after June 15th at least. And I like the idea of continuing the safety protocol until the end of September.
Okay, that sounds good. Is that a motion?
Well, that's a discussion.
Okay. What, with somebody else? What do you think? I think that's a great idea. What do you think?
So the, the safety protocol is just having, having the solicitors that are coming home, home to home, fill out some paperwork as to precautions they're taking? Is that it?
Yeah. For example, it says interacting with customers, knock on the door or ring the doorbell, announce the arrival, retreat six feet from the door, greet the resident with, with a reason for the visit, do not shake the person's hand, inform the customer that you will observe social distance, and work away from them, inform the customer that you will wear a face mask and gloves during your visit. And then it says where home access, you'd be wearing gloves. So they, they went through and listed their protocol for safety.
Okay. Then I think I would agree. I think we should lift the moratorium, but, but have them keep their own safety protocol in place for a while.
Okay. What do you think, Matt?
I'm with you guys.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion to that effect then?
Okay. I'll move that we lift the moratorium effective June 16, 2021, but still require that the Trinity Solar sales personnel follow their own protocols until September 30, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Would you second?
I'll second it.
All right, Francine? All right, Francine and Chris, any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
Tish and I.
Falls I.
Roll and I.
And Grodena. All right, thank you. We already talked about opening town hall to the public and in-person meetings and we agreed that we're opening it as of the sixteenth and that we are going to forego having the discussion about the in-person meetings until the next meeting on the fifteenth uh, when we hear what the governor has to say. What if someone's posting a meeting for the sixteenth or seventeenth?
Yeah, they need to get forty-eight hour notice.
Well, I think it, I think it could still be Zoom until we've made a decision, no? And until we've made a decision on the fifteenth and then the next one that has forty-eight hours notice, um, it would have to start applying whatever our decision would be, right?
Well, except if the legislature doesn't go along with the governor's idea, then Zoom can't continue on the sixteenth through the seventeenth.
Okay. Good point. Who normally meets on Wednesday and Thursday? Planning board, who else?
Planning board, open space, PPBB.
Yeah. Aging, but not the first of the month.
Ed, huh, checked.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I imagine whatever the legislature decides supersedes what we vote on anyway, so do we have to take any action, Ed, in your mind?
No, I would say ho- hopefully, you know, we get some guidance or, you know, approval of what the governor has filed earlier than uh, you know, the fourteenth or fifteenth, so people can plan and have their forty-eight hours of uh, notice to uh, put, put it on the uh, my town gu- government and schedule the uh, the meeting and put up an agenda.
All right, so our vote doesn't uh, dictate what they do, it's the legislature and the governor. So, we don't have to do anything, that's what I'm hearing.
I mean, yeah, as, as long as you're, you're fine with that, I mean, if you were a board that you know, was of the, you know, mindset or thought that, you know, even if the governor and the legislature, you know, continued the right to have Zoom meetings for a while, that as, as a board, you didn't want to use that option, you know, that, that's a, that would be a different probably predicament, but it seems like you're pretty much willing to uh, you know, go along and use that as an additional option as long as the state approves it.
Okay. We'll see what they say. All right, ready to move on to departmental transfers? We got the first of the uh, end of the year transfers in our packet. Ed, you wanna walk us through it, please?
Sure. And the first one's for uh, the highway department and uh, the amount is for twenty-one thousand forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents uh, to be transferred into the highway machinery maintenance expense. Uh, this is the account that uh, is used to repair the equipment and the trucks when they uh, break down and it has been overspent. And the account that it debt twenty-one thousand forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents would be taken from uh, would be highway wages. And that's A uh, on the list. And then B uh, is select board expenses are uh, overspent by nine dollars and sixty-eight cents and I'm recommending transferring nine dollars and sixty-eight cents from administration expenses. C is accounting software support uh, was overspent by a hundred and twenty-nine dollars um, because the uh, the cost of the support wa- uh, was higher than we had anticipated for an increase and uh, I'm uh, suggesting that we take that hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the assistant accountant, accountant wages. Item D is uh, town accountant, accountant expenses. Um, that's overspent by twenty-two thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and nine cents uh, and this is because we ended up using uh, a uh, Johnson and Hill uh, to provide an interim town accountant for us. So, it's, as, as a vendor, it's paid out of the expenses rather than the salary account. Um, so, that uh, twenty-two thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and nine cents would come from the town accountant's salary. Item E is employment advertising and this is how we're uh, paying for the, the accountant and the assistant accountant adds on Indeed or anywhere else. Um, and I proposing five hundred dollars uh, be taken from assistant accounting, accountant wages uh, and placed in the employment advertising account. Item F is uh, five thousand dollars to be put into the conservation expenses operating budget and that uh, five thousand dollars be taken from unemployment compensation and this is uh, due to those three tr- trees uh, and the manhill, manhattan meadows sanctuary conservation area that uh, were required to be taken down uh, as they were uh, risked to uh, in a butter's home. Item G is four hundred and five dollars uh, to be put into library maintenance uh, and that four hundred and five dollars to be taken from library wages. Uh, and this is uh, while the custodian was out on leave, we uh, had to hire a vendor to do cleaning at the library and here at town hall, so uh, this puts the money uh, back uh, into uh, the library maintenance account where it was uh, uh, taken from, uh, and transfers it from the wages where the custodian's wages uh, are. And then item H, which is the last one, uh, technology services is overspent by thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents and I'm asking that thirty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents be taken from ti- technology equipment. Uh, and the total for um, the overdrawn accounts and the accounts where the funds would be taken to, both total forty-nine thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you, Ed. Questions?
And Ra- and Randall's on, if he had any questions about his uh, uh, highway ma- machinery uh, account.
No, I don't have any questions.
Nope, I think we've been hearing about the um, lack of people and uh, excess repairs, so I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
No, I don't.
All right. Hang on, I might have to find another account to take the five thousand dollars for the uh,
Nope.
Uh, conservation from. Jen says she's gonna need the uh, unemployment money between now and the end of the year.
Do you want to um, move forward without that particular line or?
Yeah, I would, I would say at this point, let's just scratch that particular line and do the others.
Okay, would you like to make a motion then? Uh, what, what, can I just ask a question? When this was first discussed, Concom was very anxious to move because it was dangerous and it was something that we agreed we were going to uh, fund. Was there a account proposed at the time or no?
Uh, no, I just said I would, I would look and see where we have.
The conservation was going to pay for the short term, right?
What's that?
Conservation was gonna cover it in the short term and then uh, we would find, okay.
Yeah.
So, who would like to make a motion then?
I'll move to approve these transfers with the exception of the conservation expenses.
Second.
Okay, Francine and Matt, any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Tish and I.
Falls I.
Roll and I.
And Grodena. Okay, I'm sure that was the beginning of a few of them.
And, yeah, oh, yes, it is. I just wanted to get uh, some of the ones taken care of that I've known about for a, a while uh, or uh, that had been brought to my attention, so there, there will be additional ones and that new total will be forty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents.
You said forty-four, six, twelve, sixty-nine?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, okay.
So, we'll have others in the next meeting on Ju- on June fifteenth then? We'll have other transfer?
Probably, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I will pass the word on to Concom.
Okay, we have um, a new uh, revenue expense report. There's one in the packet and then I think an updated one came out um, today. Would someone like to ask a question about revenue and expenses?
Have it pulled up. Hold on.
My, my only question on the expense side is whether or not the um, adjustments to the new minimum wage of thirteen fifty, has that happened yet?
No, it has, no, it has not.
Well, some of these PR um, PCFs are actually, that just happened last meeting, right?
Yeah, but that, that's a higher, that's not-
Okay, oh, I see.
No, they're the other ones that we adjusted, right, to bring up to the thirteen fifty minimum, so those have not kicked in yet, but they're supposed to be retroactive to January, right?
Correct.
Correct, and then the uh, department heads uh, have to uh, provide us with uh, the calculation of the doll- dollar amount for that retroactivity.
Right. I think there was just one exception in that, would, which would have been the COA person who's under the grant, right, not under the town account.
Right.
So, if she's- Get that all, all those by next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, pretty much thirty days away, so uh, all of these are looking, most of them seem like they're on track here. With some of the ones that um, we've been mentioning all along are all annual ex- expenditures. A lot of the um, loans and grants and such. Does anybody have any questions about any of the line items on the um, expenditure or revenue report?
No, I think, and just a couple on the, on some of the revenue, that there, what we're starting with is new revenue that came in as of July one, right? For this fiscal year, but in some cases, in some, some categories, there would be carryover monies from last year, right, as a starting balance?
Correct.
So, we might have more in revenues in terms of the total revenue than what I'm seeing on some of these?
You wouldn't have more revenues, that's the revenues for this fiscal year. You might have a higher fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, yep. Got it. I like to create money, what can I say?
Okay, any questions about the revenue expenses?
No, I think most things look like they were on track from what I was seeing. Um, you know, we want to be sure that we spend down anything that we need to in terms of any purchases that we've got to do, obviously, so. And I think, you know, we've talked about it before, some of the technology-related ones, I think will tie in with the tech committee and some of the work they're doing now, maybe, so if there's things there, um, you know, that should get taken care of before the end of the year. Hopefully.
Any other necessary business that can't wait till the next regular June fifteenth select board meeting? Anybody have anything?
Nothing on my end.
Ed, typically around this time of year, there are requests by department heads for, or for individual employees to carry over a um, week's worth of vacation time. I think the personnel policies allow that and some contracts also specify um, vacation rollover, so I don't know when you have your department head meeting, I think you can remind, this is the one of the last meetings we have before the end of the year coming up, so.
Sure.
Good to um, kind of remind people about that. I'm assuming people are taking time off to be able to take a break?
And I, and I know s- some of them had already pu- put in for their carryover, so, but I will reach out.
Okay. At the next, um, we have a few more things, but I just, um, at the next select board meeting, we are hopefully going to have um, Erica Flood from the um, East Hampton Media, we also are going to be nominating someone to be on the board. I'd like to get some paperwork on the three people that have expressed an interest. I don't think I have that, but maybe uh, they do. We also have a request um, for the master plan update presentation. And is there anything else that, uh, people want to make sure that we cover at the next meeting?
We talked about the um, possibly the presentations from outside account, accounting firms who might-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I got that on there, I just didn't uh, include it. All right, anybody else has any other suggestions, you can just let me know. At this time, then we'll go through the PRFs.
Most of the PCFs, I think.
PCFs, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I was looking at my list here, okay.
Want to walk us through, Francine?
Yeah, okay, the, the first one is uh, for Police Chief Ian Illingsworth, it's the third year of his contract, this has a one point five percent increase bringing the, the total to a hundred and nine thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and eighty cents. The second one is for Dylan Falter Melundy. And it's for a basic EMT position um, on an as-needed basis at fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents an hour. And then we have a resignation from Robert, and I can't pronounce his name, Rosie Ansell uh, from, he was a library substitute. He resign, he uh, resigned on sometime in, in April of this year. And we have, following that, a replacement for him as a library substitute, a woman by the name of Dor- Doris Heard. And again, she would be a library substitute on an as-needed basis at the new rate of thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. And then finally, we have a um, a candidate for the assistant to the highway superintendent, Robin Richard at the rate of, it's for twenty-five hours a week, so it's a position with benefits at the rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. And that would be effective, there's no date in here, it just says as soon as possible, I'm assuming it's as soon as possible, okay? Um, so that's it, those, those five.
Can I have a motion to approve the PCFs?
Uh, I'll move to go ahead and approve the PCFs.
Yeah, you may second it, Matt?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Tish and I.
Falls I.
Roll and I.
Brodena. Uh, tis the season, we're getting some rental of the uh, Corner Park Pavilion, there are three of them. The first is Lisa Holt, uh, is having an eightieth birthday party on July twenty-fourth from eleven to eight. Uh, the Beer Guy LLC, David Capriati is having a event at Red Rock Plaza, grand opening of Vulcan um, LLC. Doing business as Dreamer, they're having a grand opening on the twenty, uh, nineteenth of June from three PM to nine PM. And then um, uh, Vulcan LLC, DBA Dreamer Entertainment, a licensed band on Fifteen College Highway, Red Rock Plaza. Same, June thirteenth, uh, three PM to eight PM. And all the paperwork's in our packet, all the fees have been paid, the uh, papers have been signed, correct, Ed?
That's correct. And I checked with uh- And I checked with Police Chief and he does not have any issues with any of these.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the licenses and permits?
No moves.
I'll second it.
And then Chris, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Fishman, I.
Falls I.
Roland, I.
And Groden, I, and welcome to the community, Dreamer.
And let me please remind you that Vulcan LLC, DBA Dreamer, has reached out and invited any of the select board members that may be available on the nineteenth at three PM to attend the ribbon cutting, which will be done at three PM.
Okay, good, great. All righty, any further comments about the licenses and permits? Okay, warrants.
Okay, I believe we have two. We have a payroll warrant, P twenty-one forty-eight, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and eight cents. And followed up with that is a payroll deduction warrant, PD twenty-one forty-eight, in the amount of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, any questions about the warrants? All righty, we have no documents, we have one set of minutes, April twenty-ninth, that was in our packet. Does anybody have any edits to that?
No, I think it was generally, generally fine. I think I had asked a question about whether there was a maximum amount for the override that we should be aiming for, but that was the only thing that might be missing is the word maximum, that was it.
Do you want to propose an edit, Chris? Where were you referring to?
Good question. It was, it was down, oh goodness, I lost it now, darn it. Oh, boy. Hold on. Hang on, hang on. It would have been, ah. Sorry, guys, I can't pull it up right quick, I don't have it handy here. Well, wherever it was, when we were discussing some of the points about the budget and override, et cetera. Hold on, it's just coming up here. It would have been at the bottom of page two. Third, third sentence.
Okay.
I asked what the dollar amount to ask for in an override would be, my question was really, what was the maximum that we should, you know, not exceed, basically?
Okay.
Okay, any other proposed edits?
Nope.
All right, would someone like to make a motion then?
I move to approve the minutes with a small edit for April twenty, was it twenty-ninth, was it?
Yes, yeah. I'll second that.
Okay, Chris and then Francine, all in favor?
Fishman, I.
And Falls I.
Roland, I.
And Groden, I. Are there any other updates on any of the pending items? The Greenway, Clearwater Woodland Boundary Charter Building, and Doors Green Community Grant?
No, not at this time.
Just one thing on charter, I know it's a separate issue, but it's somewhat related. Remember, we had talked about maybe inviting somebody from charter to come and talk to us about their service to the town and how not happy many of us are?
Yep, and that's on my list, Chris. I invite a charter representative, I have the name, Ed gave me the name of the charter person, so that's, I'm going to reach out to them.
Okay, fine.
It's not the same person that would be addressing the issue with the building, is it, Ed?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
That'd be too good.
All right, so going back to the calendar and announcements, we have the annual town meeting on the twelfth at nine AM with a rain date of the thirteenth at nine AM. Ed will call it by six-thirty or so, and then we'll let everybody know by seven-thirty or so. Select board meeting, we have the next meeting on June fifteenth by Zoom. And the annual town election is June twenty-second. And I don't, is, can't, is Lucy still with us? I'm just going to give the hours of the actual election. Is it twelve to eight?
I believe it's twelve to eight, I think so.
Yeah, noon to eight PM. Yeah, I don't, I don't see Lucy still on.
Okay, sure, it's twelve to eight, that's when it typically is. I want to ask one other question about the annual town meeting. I know you said that the final copy will have the list of the motions and it will say which ones approved by the finance committee?
Yes.
And the select board will just take turns reading the motions in whatever, you know, sequential order. But is it going, is it clear who is going to address the various motions? I mean, I think we should make sure that it's clear, that if there's, for example, the schools, is that going to be addressed by John Lumbras? Is it going to be addressed by Matt, is the school committee liaison, is it going to be addressed by the custodian, like? And I just want to be clear about what the plan will be for.
Oh, you mean, you mean for, like, the capital items?
Well, for any, any item, I guess that, yeah, I guess it would be the capital items.
Yeah, you, I would normally also add who the speaker is to that, to the article.
Okay, so you'll put that on the list too, so we don't have to sort of pause and
Correct.
Everybody knows what their job is as far as the articles.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, at this time, we actually have a joint meeting with the housing authority. And I want to give a moment to the housing authority to actually call their meeting to order, providing they have a quorum. And it looks like they do. So Jim, would you like to say hello and the rest of your committee and actually call your meeting to order?
It'll take a few seconds for the unmute to clear.
Jim?
Jim's in the Northern Lights.
Yeah. Okay, I see Jim and I see Janet and Sierra, are you able to go on video?
Yes, yes, ooh, sorry about that, hold on.
There she is.
There she is, hello. So would you like to just go ahead and call your meeting to order so it's opened?
He's still muted.
Here we go.
Sorry about that, folks, the phone was ringing here, it was very loud, you didn't need to hear that. My name is Jim Seeny, I am the Chair of the Southampton Housing Authority. I'm joined by our clerk, Janet Kane, and member Sierra Simmons. And I want to thank Ms. Groden and the entire select board for the opportunity to participate with you today. Our goal today is to have some education and perhaps some brief discussion, Q and A regarding housing trusts. And thankfully, we have a guest with us, Shelley Goring, am I pronouncing that correct, Shelley? She's going to provide an overview of housing trust, which I'm most grateful for because those of us in the housing authority are learning ourselves. So this opportunity for this joint meeting and this education is most prudent. So if, if there's any, no need for further delay, I suggest that we go right to Shelley and she begin her presentation, is that permissible?
Yeah, that sounds great.
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 Welcome to the Southampton Select Board Meeting.
Thanks for inviting me to be here. So I'm wondering if I am able to share my screen, have I been given that privilege?
Sure.
You should be able to go ahead and do that. Nice, it's working.
Can you see that? Okay, good.
Yes.
So a few of you saw this, basically this presentation a few months ago. But I'm Shelley Garing and I work at MHP, Mass Housing Partnership. And I'm in their community assistance team, but we are a quasi-state, just in case you're not familiar with MHP, we are a quasi-state agency in Massachusetts and also organized as a nonprofit. And we're really focused on increasing the supply of affordable housing across the state and all. So I'm on the community assistance team, we have four legs to our stool. We, my team really focuses on technical assistance to municipalities, to nonprofits and housing authorities. We have a lending team that has lent over a billion dollars to support over twenty-two thousand units of housing. We really focus on affordable rental housing. We have the One Mortgage Program, which is the most affordable mortgage for households earning up to a hundred percent of the area needing income. And it's a unique program for Massachusetts. And then our fourth leg is the Center for Housing Data. We have a team of folks that collect, analyze, and share data just to help inform effective policy on the local, regional, and state level. So tonight, what I'm wanting to go through is, I don't think that we're going to have time to get into the third, the eligible activities, unless you feel like when we get to that point, you have the bandwidth to stick around. But we're really going to look at what an affordable housing trust is and some of the operations and just best practices that we've learned as we've worked with many different communities across the state. And then if we have time, we can get a little bit into the eligible activities, the kinds of things an affordable housing trust could be supporting. Feel free to interrupt me if I use acronyms, if I speak too fast, like, don't, don't be overly polite, please interrupt me and let me know. So to start off, municipal affordable housing trusts are organized under Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five C with a mass general law. They are public entities, so it's not outside of the municipality, it would be your community's affordable housing trust. They're created by your local legislative body with a majority vote. The purpose is really to create and preserve affordable housing. So the focus is actually fairly narrow, it's not necessarily everything having to do with housing, it's really about creating and preserving affordable housing, not market rate, not mixed income, really affordable housing. It's led by a board of trustees that are appointed locally. And then the blue, which I know the white, I'm sorry, the white in the bottom left, you can't see that well, but because it's a municipal entity, it's subject to public procurement, design or selection, conflict of interest, and public meeting laws, similarly to all of your other boards, municipal boards. So the general process is, so I guess you're actually organized as a town, I should have changed it to bylaw, but is to first decide whether you want to just accept the statute as it's written or whether you want to write a bylaw and add some additional guidance to the Affordable Housing Trust locally. And then your legislative body would accept the bylaw or the statute. It would be submitted to the AG's office within thirty days. At that point, then you can establish the board of trustees. Many communities decide to record a declaration of trust upfront to establish the powers of the trust and the registry will accept a standalone document if you decide to do that. And then most communities set up a trust fund account, really just through the municipal treasurer. And then the navy blue, the dark blue steps are suggestions that I'm going to get into, but updating a housing needs analysis, if your information is dated, identify priorities and create guidelines for the housing trust and then determine how you're going to operate as a trust. So I'll get into those, but this is the general process to create, to establish a trust. So very broadly, an affordable housing trust can address your local affordable housing needs and really take some local control of addressing those needs with different initiatives, local initiatives. The trust can engage in real estate activities, so the trust can buy and sell property or work really nimbly with developers to help a developer purchase a site for affordable housing. Because the Affordable Housing Trust doesn't have to go to the select board or town meeting necessarily, none of them go to town meeting, it means that the trust can move more nimbly if they have funds in their account and this is desirable in a real estate market just because we don't want to lose opportunities that may be ideal for affordable housing. And then the trust, as a municipal entity, can be collecting resources from a variety of, a variety of different places, a variety of different funds, which I'll talk about as well. So the statute specifies, it actually is, it doesn't give an extensive amount of guidance about who the trustees should be, but it does establish that there need to be a minimum of five members on the board. In a town, it must include a member of the select board, so the statute says the chief executive officer or in a community with a select board, it's one member of the select board must be on the trust. These folks are appointed by the select board. They have two-year terms and many communities stagger those so that you never have full turnover of the board. And then, like with all of your other municipal boards, the appointees are public agents or special municipal employees under municipal law. The statute says a minimum of five, many communities decide to have more than five members. Many put this in their, they end up writing a bylaw and many will establish that they want seven members, some have nine members. We have at least a couple of communities that have over ten, which is Brookline and Salem, but I only know of those two communities. I think the most common is probably seven members. Some communities write in their bylaw a little bit more guidance about who should be appointed to the trust. So some, it's more suggestions of the kind of skill sets or work experience, so they might suggest people who have experience in housing development or affordable housing and real estate law, some of these kinds of backgrounds. We suggest that you not be too prescriptive, you just don't want it to be difficult down the road to find folks that are strong candidates to be on the trust. And some people are really fantastic and they don't have any of those direct skills. Some communities, Brookline is an example, reserve some spots on their trust for people who live in rental housing or affordable rental housing, to make sure that there's broad perspective on the trust. Some communities want representatives from certain boards to be on the trust, so they might want someone from the Community Preservation Committee to be on the trust or the Planning Board or the Affordable Housing Partnership or Committee, perhaps the Housing Authority Board. So some want that cross interaction. You just want to be a little bit cautious that you don't have trustees that are on too many boards because it really needs to be a board that have members that can be working participants, really fully engaged. So the statute has lists a variety of different powers that are given to the trust and it does allow for a community to modify those powers, add to those powers, as long as it's in keeping with the statute. And some communities decide to do that. We may, we have some communities that with some of the more significant powers, the big powers, like some of these here, they might want two-thirds vote for the trust to decide to purchase a site or a community, if the trust wants to borrow funds, they might want the select board to sign off on that. So there, there are communities that add some of that additional accountability. You, again, we just kind of caution to be careful with that, to be selective because you just don't want to detract from some of the benefits of having an affordable housing trust. But this is an example of Brewster, a town on the Cape. They created their trust a few years ago, they actually had an existing affordable housing fund that was not very flexible. So they dissolved that, transferred the funds into this new municipal affordable housing trust. And they have seven trustees, so that's what their bylaw specifies. They have a select member of the select board, which is required. They also give their town administrator a spot on the trust or an appointee, and at this point, the town administrator has appointed. And at this point, the town administrator has appointed the assistant town administrator. So that means that they do have a staff person, a municipal staff person on the trust. They require a representative from their housing partnership, a representative from their Community Preservation Committee, a representative from the Planning Board and then two citizens at large. So this is just what they decided is important for their communication in their, in their community, wanting this kind of representation. And it's, it's not extremely common to have a municipal staff person on the trust. But in the case of Brewster, and this is a similar in Beverly has staff folks on their trust. But I think it actually has helped with communication. So in the case of Brewster, their assistant town administrator, she, you know, she pretty much knows everyone. She knows all the committee heads. She knows the select board. So I think that it actually has been really beneficial to help with communication and partnerships between different boards. And then their power, so they do require the allocations over $50,000 are subject to the select board approval, so the full select board approval. So that was the way that they decided to modify one of the powers. But then they created their trust and they spent the first several months developing a mission statement, creating goals with priority initiatives and holding a housing forum, so engaging the community with their process as they were looking at the needs in the community and then deciding what kind of the mission was going to be and how they were going to operate as a trust. So it's a, I think, a really great model about how to get started really thoughtfully. So as we're working in more and more communities, the, the keys to a successful trust, it's not really rocket science. It's that the trust has some funds available, that they have a vision of their purpose in the community, that they have leadership helping to move things forward and transparency, that there's openness in the community about what they're working on. So we're seeing that communities are, are being much more creative around how they're funding their Affordable Housing Trust. And while CPA, the Community Preservation Act, is definitely the most common and about 76% of our trust communities also have CPA. It's only one funding source and it's not a guarantee in every community. So we have communities, the Yellow Hexagon, that have inclusionary zoning and they have an in lieu of payment that is allowed for some developments. And in some communities that those funds are directed to the Affordable Housing Trust. It's actually written in the inclusionary zoning bylaw. So Swan Scott is an example of a community that's done that. And their trust has actually benefited from these resources. The Blue Hexagon, we have a community on the Cape that has a cell phone tower and the income from the lease payments are directed to their Affordable Housing Trust. Free cash, we have some communities that have transferred free cash to their trust. Brookline and Truro are communities of this, that have done this. The income from tax title sales could be directed to an Affordable Housing Trust. You may have a special bylaw that could generate some revenue for the trust. And then a municipal bond, we have our first community, Medfield, that created a trust a few years ago and they also bonded a million dollars to cede their Affordable Housing Trust. And Medfield does not have CPA, so they didn't bond it against CPA. They bonded it against their budget. And then Orleans is the first community that we know of that has passed a tax override to support their trust. They passed, they created a trust a few years ago and then also passed at their election, that's June, a $275,000 tax override that they see as a permanent tax override. So they're the only trust that I know of that's been able to get a line of credit from a bank because they have this guaranteed income each year. And then some communities have maybe been able to negotiate some developer fees. You just want to be cautious with how you do this. And you may know that there's legislation for real estate transfer fees. Many communities like Boston and Antucket are wanting to be able to charge real estate transfer fees that can be directed to affordable housing. And short-term rental fees, marijuana tax, these are also tools that some communities are considering. Gloucester has directed some of their short-term rental fee income to their, to their affordable housing work. And some communities are considering donations and that could be cash. It could also be land or a building. So there are a lot of different ways that communities are, are trying to generate funds for affordable housing. And for a trust that's starting out, we really suggest that, that the group make sure that you have updated housing needs data. So if your housing needs analysis or housing production plan, I forgot to look up to see if, I'm forgetting if Southampton has one or how old it is, but how old your data is. But if the data is four or five years old, you may want to consider updating that information. And so a first step could be that the trust work on updating, getting a good picture, a current picture of, of the needs in the community.
Is Garing?
Yes.
If I could interrupt just a moment, I, I think that's timely because we just received a grant to work with the Planning Board in partnership this next year to, to not only look at zoning, but to look at, create essentially a housing need. Because ours is old. And so we'll be working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So that's great. That fits right in with what you're saying here.
And I, I remember now that you brought that up, I think you were applying when I was speaking to you last. So, so we would suggest starting with current needs in the community and then spending some time to set priorities that the housing needs in all of our communities are significant and it's a volunteer board, it's one board. There, you can't do everything at once. So to really understand the needs and then set some priorities, some guidelines for the trust. And then the trust could create some benchmarks. That's not necessary, but there's one community, Somerville. They have decided that they want a certain percentage of their funds to go towards households earning under, I think it's under 50% of the area needing income. So they just want to make sure that they're setting that benchmark for themselves, but also entities in the community, that they want a portion of their funds to go towards the lowest income households. It takes teamwork. So it, it really takes trustees who can show up, who can help establish a quorum at meetings, who are really going to be workers on the committee. A chairperson who has some project management capacity, who can help move things forward. And then the most successful trusts seem to have some type of paid support, whether that's administrative support, whether that's technical to help manage programs. But most that are the most kind of effective and able to move things forward generally have some sort of paid support. So we would just suggest that you give a little bit of thought to what that might look like. In one community like Manchester, they had, at the time, they had a part-time planner. And when they created an Affordable Housing Trust, they increased their hours to support, help support the Affordable Housing Trust. In some communities, they have a part-time housing coordinator. In some communities like Chelsea, they have one administrator that's helping to support their Community Preservation Committee and their Affordable Housing Trust. So there are a lot of different models, but we would, we would suggest that you consider how you would support the trust. And then when you have different entities working on affordable housing, it can be helpful to have a conversation early on around who, who's doing what, what are the different roles of the entities? And this is just simply something that Manchester put together for their housing production plan, where they established what their housing strategies were on the left. And then they decided which ones were a little bit shorter term, longer term. And on the right-hand side, they just identified the lead board or boards that were going to focus on those strategies. So it just helps create a little bit of accountability, but also helps hopefully those boards from stepping on each other's toes because they've identified who's the lead. And in a community, this could include the housing authority. Also, it can include the Housing Partnership or Committee, perhaps even a nonprofit that's doing housing work. So it could look different in different communities. But we have found that in some communities where they establish a trust and they don't have these conversations early on, that it can actually create some tension between different housing groups down the road. So we just suggest establishing roles early. And then ensuring transparency, that we all know that affordable housing can be, and housing development in many communities can be very controversial. So we just really urge communities and housing trusts to not make it difficult for people to find out what the trust is doing, what you're working on. If you've created a mission and guidelines, put that on the webpage. Put who the trustees are on the webpage. When you invest in different developments or programs, promote that and report back to the entities that you've determined are important in the community for communication. But just don't make it difficult for people to understand and to know what you're doing. And then we have some trusts that want to just be a funder. They just want to have money in their account. They want to receive applications and decide if they want to fund different developments. We have trusts that are really initiating. So it was actually the Affordable Housing Trust in many communities this last 15 months that, that were the ones that stepped up and established local emergency rent assistance programs. That was the trust in many, in many cases. And we're also seeing more Affordable Housing Trusts be really engaged with disposing of municipal land for affordable housing. And sometimes that land is transferred to the trust and they're really managing all of the process. In most cases, they're just really engaged in the initial due diligence feasibility of the site, writing a request for proposals, reviewing them. So we're seeing that more and more. And then in some communities, the trust wants to do both of these things. Some communities, the trust is really, plays an advocacy role as well. So we just also suggest that the trust upfront decide how they're going to operate and then communicate that in the community. And then I just want to do a time check and see how you're feeling. If you want to do a few more slides around the kind of eligible activities or if you want to just have some conversation or questions, how are you feeling?
So I originally set up a 15 and 20 minute presentation and so I'm open to whatever people decide they want to do. How about the housing committee? What would you like to do?
I'm certainly open to continuing. I'm finding this very interesting. I mean, it's familiar because we've seen most of it prior. But if, 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 I'd say if the select board is engaged and we can go a few more minutes here, it'd be worth it.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, so we, I use the language of CPA, the acquire, create, preserve, support. These are the four verbs that we talk about with the Community Preservation Act because the trust statute was modified a few years ago to allow, to broaden the allowable focuses of the trust to mirror all the eligible activities of community housing under the CPA statute. So I use those verbs because, I mean, you have CPA, so you're in an advantage where you know this language more than some communities. But so there, these are just some examples. Some of these examples that I'm going to give were funded directly from the, by the Community Preservation Coalition. Others were funded by the trust. All of these examples can be funded by the Affordable Housing Trust. So just one example of acquiring, this was an existing apartment complex in Barnstable of 124 units. Nonprofit entity was able to acquire it using some CPA funds. So they used $500,000 of local funds to then be able to access additional financing to purchase the development, rehab the apartments. And then almost all of the units are now affordable. A few of them remain market rate because the tenants were not income-eligible and they didn't want to displace anyone. But almost all these units are now affordable. So just an example of acquiring existing housing to create into affordable housing. And then we have several Affordable Housing Trusts that manage small-scale homeownership programs. So this is Leverett is a CPA community that also has an Affordable Housing Trust and their trust manages this homeownership assistance program. They actually have, the Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority actually manage it. But the trust established it and funds it. So they have a maximum purchase price of $275,000 and then they offer up to $50,000 towards the purchase of a home. And then at the time of purchase, they add a restriction. So these homes in Leverett are affordable for households earning up to 100% of the area at median income. So they're not on the state's subsidized housing inventory. They don't go towards Leverett's 10%. But they decided to go up to 100%, of the area meeting income. And they have their own restriction, affordability restriction that they add to these units so that at the time of resale, it has to be sold to the next family that's income-qualified. So this is just Leverett's model and there are many different models of how to structure these kind of programs. Because they're expensive, no community adds more than just two or three units a year. But it can be a way to help support some homeownership, moderate income homeownership in the community. And then several communities are contributing towards creating new affordable housing. This is an example in Yarmouth on the Cape, where this former motor lodge on Route 28 was acquired privately. The community had actually rezoned this part of Route 28 to allow multifamily housing. So it was an incentive for the developer then to acquire the site and then worked with the community on develop, creating this program of 69 affordable apartments, one, two and three bedrooms. They're affordable, 60% of the area at median income, that's the ceiling. And when you see 60%, you know that low-income housing tax credits are in the deal. And then the state requires that, that some of the units are affordable, have deeper affordability at 30% of the area median income. So that's seven units in this development. And then the local Affordable Housing Trust actually put in over $2 million into this development, which came out to $30,000 per unit, which is very generous. That's, that's on the higher end of what we see. But it does mean that the development was funded by the state on the first round between the rezoning of the area and then the significant local investment. It was probably why the state funded this so quickly despite the competition. But the one example of creating, and then another much smaller example with this much smaller community, Gosham, not too far from you. The, the community has set up a committee of looking at the need for senior rental housing. And it was really this, this committee that started to talk with the local nonprofit Affordable Housing Developer and this church and identified this surplus land. The nonprofit was able to use some, a CDEC acquisition loan. So CDEC is a quasi-state agency that has some acquisition funds for nonprofit developers. And then they built 10 units of affordable age-restricted senior housing units there. So single-floor, one-bedroom units. And the local CPC, which could have been an Affordable Housing Trust, but they don't have one, contributed $130,000 towards this development. So a much more modest development, but a very small community. And then we see oftentimes the reusing of an existing building for affordable housing. And this sometimes can be less controversial, particularly if the development has been underutilized or empty for years and it's helping to bring it online and renovate it. Sometimes there's a historic component, but not always. So the shoe shop place in Middleborough had been a shoe factory and a couple nonprofits were able to work together and redevelop this site into 25 rental apartments. In the middle, Stevens Corner in North Andover, this had been a nursing home and it had been underutilized for years and a nonprofit was able to acquire it and then use local resources to redevelop the site into 42 apartments. And then on the right, there are many sites, many past schools that have been redeveloped into housing. And in this case, in Rockport, it was affordable housing for seniors, so age-restricted housing. And then when we talk about preservation with CPA, generally we're talking about preserving the affordability of units. So many times affordable units actually have restrictions that are only in place, required to be in place for 15 years or 30 years, as was the case with Rolling Green in Amherst, where there were 41 affordable units. They were, they only had 15-year restrictions and they were coming up on expiring. The owner at the time was not interested in expanding the affordability. He wanted them to go market rate. As you likely know, the, the market there with the universities is, is very tight. So the community was really concerned about losing them, reached out to MHP and ended up deciding to engage a different developer, Beacon Communities. And Beacon negotiated to purchase the, the development from the previous developer owner. And then the community did use CPA and bonded $1.25 million to support this acquisition. And now these 41 units are affordable in perpetuity in Amherst. So a trust likely would not be able to bond because they, most trusts do not have a consistent source of income like CPA. But some trusts may, are, some trusts are paying attention to units that might have an expiring affordability and engaged in the conversation about how to extend that affordability and could work collaboratively with the CPA or the CPC to extend affordability. And then support under CPA has historically been seen as pre-development work on a municipal site that you are interested in potentially seeing affordable housing. So doing some of the initial feasibility work. Updating your housing plans or area needs assessments could potentially be funded by the trust. And then rental assistance, as you likely know, is specifically called out in the CPA statute as allowable, which means that then the trust could also be investing in rental assistance. So just to summarize, kind of reminders is that we do suggest that a new trust starting out or even before you create a trust, that you really consider your local infrastructure, your housing infrastructure and the needs and the resources that, that you have in your community and then determine whether a trust could really fit a niche or fill a role. And then determine whether a trust could really fit a niche or fill a role that's not being fully met yet in the community. And then when you do get started, that the trust really develops goals that reflect identified needs. So that's why it's so important that you're updating your housing needs analysis or whatever you're calling your plan. Because oftentimes when we work with affordable housing, there can be, I've heard it so many times in communities of people mulling over what they think they could get past town meeting. And creating policy based on that and not on the identified housing needs can be problematic when we're using municipal resources. And then it's a volunteer board. Be real about the capacity of the board. Pick a couple of things or a few things to do really well, but understand that the needs are great and it takes time. We have plenty of online resources that are available for you and then my information that we want to be a resource for you. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen and then if people have any conversation or comments that I'm happy to stick around for a while.
Thank you very much, Shelley. What questions people have? That was a lot of information.
Yeah.
I am just like shocked. Here we are like trying to like fund this override to like essential services and people funded override for the trust. I mean, it's remarkable to me what some of the communities are doing. What percent of the people, the communities in the state of Massachusetts, is there a trust, you know, out of 351?
So by our count is we have about 118 Affordable Housing Trusts and most of them are municipal affordable housing trusts. There are about a dozen that were created before the enabling legislation in 2005, so like Boston, Cambridge, some of these communities already had one. But most of them are this municipal affordable housing trust model. And the Medfield that bonded a million dollars. So they've had a lot of 40B pressure. And they'll say very bluntly that, that they have had some that they've really liked and then they had one 40B that they really, really disliked. And it was the impetus to kind of get them moving to do things locally, to be more engaged and active and to have a group of people that are focused on affordable housing. So that was, you know, they had a big motivator. It, it's also, I think, a pretty affluent community. So I don't know how that compares with your community. I'm not saying anything about your community. I'm just saying that some communities have different resources than others.
I grew up right next to Medfield and it's probably at least three to four times the size of our community. And it does tend to be in that next to Sherburne, Dover. I mean, it's right there. Pretty affluent.
Yeah. 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 So, you know, communities do what they can, which is why I like to give the, the Goshen example, that it's 10 units. But for Goshen, 10 units is, that's a significant development. So it's not trying to be Boston or Cambridge, or it's, it's figuring out what can you do in your community.
Yeah, I think for Goshen, it, that seems like it's all right sized as well. I mean, both the, what they ended up building, but also just the, you know, the level of investment and everything they had to go through. That seems appropriate for that size of community. So that would be probably more the model for Southampton, I would think, too.
Jim, do you want to ask a question or say something?
No, I guess you muted, Jim.
It'll take a few seconds to unmute him. Shelley, I, I also want to add my voice to the thanks. I really appreciate you coming in at this hour and presenting to both of these boards. I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. One, it's interesting, I think, maybe you can comment, the Goshen model also was specifically for seniors, which I think is intriguing. Were there any challenges to that, that you, are you familiar with it or can you comment on that?
So they just had, years before, they had put, established a committee looking at the needs of seniors and then they passed the Community Preservation Act. So then they had some resources. So it, it kind of was just a process that they had put together this committee because some folks had identified an interest or a need. The committee had identified housing as an, as a need, affordable housing. And then they passed CPA, so they had some local resources available. And so that was kind of the impetus to actually get a development moving. And then they have a, a local nonprofit developer in the area in that region and they engaged the developer. So they just started building these relationships. And so it didn't just happen overnight. You know, it was a, a sequence of relationship building and, and steps of identifying this surplus land, working with the church, the developers, seeking a grant to be able to acquire the site. So, but it started with this committee of folks that were looking at senior, supporting seniors in the community. And, you know, that, that, it's not the, there are several people living in the development that actually don't live in the community because there wasn't, sometimes we think that there's an, an interest that isn't necessarily in the community. So there are some local seniors that applied and that are living in the development, but it's, it's benefited seniors that weren't just in Goshen. And I, I just say that because a lot of communities think that what we need is age restricted senior housing. And oftentimes what we need is just affordable rental housing that's anyone who's income qualified can live in, because seniors can live in non-age restricted housing. But families or younger singles cannot live in senior age restricted housing. So it's actually more flexible to have housing that's not age restricted. But it does mean that you might want to be particularly sensitive about design and being visitable and so that you can age in the development well. So that, you know, so the design doesn't have a lot of steps and it's not townhouses and that sort of thing, so that, so that people at all stages of the lifecycle can live in the development.
Those are good points. You know, in Southampton, from what I hear, you know, from, from folks is we have, at either end of the spectrum, we have a need for affordable housing. People who've grown up in Southampton, who would like to stay in Southampton, can't afford to, to buy or rent in Southampton, they move out of town. So we're losing the younger population. And at the other end, seniors are leaving because they don't need their big homes anymore. Yet there's nothing that they can move into that's affordable. So I, you know, this is, this is a, a great opportunity for us, I think, to look at, you know, that both sets of needs. And I'm, I'm encouraged. I, I didn't know there were such things as nonprofit developers.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a great, I like that idea.
Yeah, you have Valley CDC that's based in Northampton and they've done developments in multiple communities around you. So they're just one, so you have a, a few different options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think the idea of a trust is, is a great one. I mean, we've, you know, we've been a community that's, that's benefited from CPC funds for a long time and we've, you know, managed to acquire a small, small pot of money toward affordable housing, but we haven't been able to really do much with that yet. And there are times where, you know, we see some small affordable older homes come on the market and as soon as they're on the market, they're gone. So it's like we, we've got some things in place, but yet we are nowhere near nimble enough to be able to, to grab onto something and then take the next steps forward. So until we have something that allows us to have a certain amount of flexibility and be able to build up some funds so that we can jump quickly on an opportunity when we see it, you know, we're, we're going to be just kind of sitting in, sitting in limbo land. So I think, you know, to the extent that we could figure out the right way to, to move forward, this would be very, very interesting, I think, and very helpful to us.
Shelley, if I could ask another question. I had apparently aired previously because I, it was my understanding that on a housing trust, that the, any member of the housing authority could not be on that trust, but I thought I heard you say that that's a possibility, even though it wasn't in your example. Do you have any thoughts about that? Is it not a good idea? Is it a good idea? Should there, I don't know.
It, it's definitely possible. If you want a representative of your housing authority on the trust, that's certainly possible. And it's just a local decision of whether that feels like an important appointment, appointment, important relationship. It, it's, it's, it's completely up to the community. So we have many communities where the, they have a representative of their affordable housing partnership, like Brewster or their affordable housing committee. And if the, the board that you have that's active in housing is your housing authority, then it could make sense to have an appointee from that housing authority. The only caution is that your CPC has to have an appointee from the housing authority. So the more that they're taxed to be on other boards, it, it can just be a lot for members of the housing authority. So that's just what we would, I would suggest that you think through.
And just for clarification, is there a difference between a housing partnership and a housing authority? Or are these just different names for similar functions?
No, they're different. Housing authorities are state organized and they oftentimes own units and manage units and vouchers and they have different authority. And a partnership is a committee that oftentimes has the charge of reviewing affordable housing, like, for example, a chapter 40B development or a development that includes affordable housing and to weigh in on it. And partnerships oftentimes play an advocacy role in the community, but it's, they're actually very different entities. But there's no reason why the housing authority couldn't have an appointee on the trust.
Any other questions for Shelley? Go ahead. Sierra, I think you're muted though. Ed, could you unmute her, please?
I just want to highlight what I believe to be the case and what I thought was a very sort of convincing detail, which is that you can have the housing trust funds pay for the housing trust administrator. So it's not like you need to find a new town money to pay for this, you know, entity part-time who's going to be making sure the housing trust continues to operate, making sure everything gets taken care of, that can be paid for out of all those same funds that come into the housing trust, if I'm not mistaken.
You're right.
Yeah. Good point.
Really good point. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Well, lots of good information. Wow, that's a lot of new information for, for a lot of us, too. So thank you, Shelley, very much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And Shelley, I can forward the presentation, the slides to folks, because it looks a little bit different than the one you presented earlier. Are you willing to send it to me and I can get it to folks on the slide board?
I'll send you the PDF and you can send it out or post it, whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Okay.
Tammy, do you have a question? Yep. Tammy, you want to unmute her, please?
Sure.
Tammy Malunas, if, Jim, you can get that presentation, I would love to be able to get that out to the Southampton Facebook page. It was full of information that I don't think everybody has had the opportunity to see and actually comprehend. So, Jim, if you get that, please let me know so that I can get that out on the community page.
There are no objections.
You agree with that, Shelley?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Tammy.
Could probably put it on the town website as well.
Yeah. The other thing, I was thinking, if we could get the clip of this, this one presentation from East Hampton Media to use so that it isn't just the PowerPoint, but it is her full presentation, that would be great.
Yeah. Yep.
It's like a thumbs up from East Hampton Media.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Really appreciate your time, Shelley. Thank you very much.
Oh, I think Janet has a question.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. I just want to sneak in at the end here. I, you know, so I think, you know, we'll get together with the Select Board after this and talk about next steps because that, a housing trust is really not the mission of the housing authority, as Shelley said. So we need to help put a strategy together on, do we feel that once our plan is together and we have an updated housing plan, which is great that the DLTA grant's going to help us accomplish that. But we also need to, you know, really see if the Select Board members are, you know, want to move in this direction and set up a trust. I know it's another board, but it's, you know, what I guess was surprising to me when we first saw this, that it's not the housing authority's mission. It's more the Select Board and the towns' mission. So I just want to make sure we don't just let it end here tonight.
I appreciate that. And I know that back when I was going to some of the housing meetings, you know, there have been a lot of things that have tried, from having a gathering of the builders to see what barriers, to connecting with Habitat for Humanity, for jumping on any, you know, affordable properties in town. And there've actually been, you know, a lot over the years that have tried to sort of utilize the CPC funds to be able to help people. And I was shocked at how high the income level is, that it would qualify for a lot of, you know, people that grew up in town that would love to live in town but aren't able to afford to live in town. And they have a, you know, you know, middle income in a lot of ways. So anyway, I think it's a great idea that we continue the conversation. Absolutely.
I mean, once, if we have a trust instead, then we don't have to worry about going to CPC. Once the towns agree to the trust, then, then the money's more accessible and we can be more flexible.
Right. Because right now, it's a town legislative approval, a town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Any other final comments, questions? Thank you again, Shelley.
Thanks very much.
And if the housing authority would like to make a motion to close their meeting?
All right. Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to adjourn. Janet Kane.
Simmons I? I mean, seconded?
Yeah, you seconded? Okay. All in favor in the housing authority to adjourn the housing authority section of this?
May no.
Simmons I.
Senior I. It is unanimous.
We're looking for more members. That's just a little commercial.
Spread the words.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Select Board. Thank you. And Shelley, thank you very much.
Perfectly. Take care.
Thank you for joining us. So at this time, we're, we're up to open time for the public. The Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation as follows. Open time is a time when town, town residents can bring matters before the Select Board that require a minimum of discussion and are not on the agenda. Please try to keep your comments short and to the point. Plan on being allowed up to five minutes per person, not per topic, to speak on any meeting, at any meeting under open time only. If it appears that the topics being discussed will consume longer than five minutes allocated at the discretion of the chair, the matter will be placed on an upcoming Select Board meeting agenda. If you believe that your topic will require more time or desire to make a more formal presentation than is allowed under these guidelines, please contact the town administrator to ask to be put on a future agenda so that you can properly allocate enough time. You are free to ask questions or to make your points for all to consider. However, engaging in active debate with the Select Board or audience members will not be allowed. All comments and questions must be directed to the Chair of the Board and all comments must be respectful and courteous, free of name-calling and personal attacks. Inappropriate language will not be tolerated. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Tammy?
Tammy Malunas, 298 College Highway. I have two items. First is, on June 8th at 6:30 in the evening, in the town pavilion at Conan Park, is going to be a Let's Celebrate Southampton meeting, where we're inviting all people that would like to find out more information about the event, hear what we're doing, help make plans, volunteer, or just, you know, we're going to be at the pavilion, so people can come, please, and hear what we're going to be doing on August 13th and 14th. My second question is, I know we've been doing the fiscal year 21. Going forward, have, and looking at the town's expenses, is there, I guess this is more of a question for Ed, is there something that states that municipalities have to do benefits for 20 hours? Or is that something that we can say you have to work 25 hours or more to get all these benefits from the town?
No, that's part of FSLA.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Hello, Ed, what that is? Hello, Ed, what that is?
It's Fair Labor Standard Act.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that was one of the things we were looking at, trying to see if, you know, if we had increased that, could we cut down on benefits? And that would be less, less of an expense for the town. But cannot be done. I'll shut up now.
It's a thought, so.
Tammy, can I just?
Very good. Thank you.
Tammy, can I just ask you a question? I know that on the 10th of June, I have back-to-back meetings and actually both of them are posted at Conan Park. Maybe this is actually more for Ed or maybe Lucy. One's at 5:30, one's at 6:00. When you post a meeting to happen at Conan Park, is there some way of looking to see that other, I mean, are two meetings, is there any problem with two meetings happening at the same time? Is there a way that you are checking to make sure there's no other meeting posted there?
She's muted again.
Oh, sorry.
You actually need to reserve the pavilion with Paula Mac, excuse me, Mac, to use it. And then that way there, she gives you the permit that you bring to the police department to get the keys for the restrooms. Because it's very important that if you're going to have a gathering of any people there, that the bathrooms are open and that you can get to the electricity to turn lights on. But yeah, Paula is the one to confirm with for having any meetings. And she has let us do two meetings at the same time. The Historical Society has hit this. We've been at one end of the pavilion and another group has been at the other end, even during the pandemic.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's good to know. I was kind of wondering because they're both, it's convenient, but it's actually two of them at the same place, so just wondering. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Nilda, do you have a question or comment? I think she's muted, Ed.
She'll be unmuted in a couple of seconds. There. Okay. No? There.
Thank you. I'm going to read my statement to stay within my five minutes that you have allowed me. I am, the purpose of I coming before the board is that this past Friday, May 28th, the select board took action inappropriate and completely out of their purview in contacting a separate nonprofit organization to express their disapproval with its decision to invite candidates running for the elected office of select board to record candidate statements. You interfered with a process which only the individuals invited should have chosen. This was completely out of line with your role. That's my statement.
Okay. I'll make a comment. I wrote a letter and it was to Jen Ramsey, voicing my dissatisfaction with the decision that was made. I did not sign it as a select board member. I signed it as Rini Groden. And it was up to the East Hampton Media to respond, and they did. So that's the only comment I have.
But there was more than one person from this board that also made a comment. So when you appear or you take a position that affects your role as the chair, it has an impact. And you denied, by causing this request personal or with some agenda, you affected individuals the opportunity, the opportunity. You have no right to choose or affect the outcome.
I have the right, Nilda, to voice my opinion. You're a member of the board. There was a neutral party that since 2014 has held a candidate forum that was videotaped and publicized on East Hampton Media. So did you request of East Hampton Media an opportunity to do a candidate forum separate?
I inquired. I inquired. I did not request.
Okay. I have no further.
I mean, it seems to me that we provided the candidates night and 191 did a live videotaping and everybody was present in terms of the candidates except Matt, who couldn't be there that night.
So that was separate.
All of the candidates have been heard.
You're going to tell me that if I go and put an ad in the newspaper, if I go to a group to talk to, that I should be satisfied because me, the candidates, was sanctioned by the town of Southampton and I should say, okay, I'm done.
I'm just saying.
Access.
No, I'm just saying that 191 already videotaped it. I don't see the need to do another videotaping of something that was a public live recording. Only one person was not able to be there as one of the candidates. And if anybody needs to videotape it, should he want to, it would be Matt.
Everybody had a choice. Everybody had a choice.
Well, I, you know, I voiced my opinion that I thought it was a conflict of interest. You're on their board of directors.
Oh, and I have the power to influence the board.
You're saying that I have the power to influence the board, or as being chair? That's what you just said that I did. So anyway, is there any other?
I think you should reflect on those words because it is quite evident, particularly with the Zoom meetings, that there's discussions, very limited discussions on topics, that it's evident that you guys have met or phoned or sent emails to each other.
Any comment?
Nilda, I recommend that you do you. If you want to write a newspaper article, go right ahead. If you want to contract with East Hampton Media on your own, go right ahead. Like, you got to do you here. But these accusations are ludicrous. And just for the record, and I'm sorry to have to say this, but we've been taking a fair amount of your correspondence here over the last year. And the tone and the negativity of it is hard to read.
To which I've never had a response to the questions I posed.
Because you've never come on live TV to have a discussion, which this is the first time you've come on to actually do it. Instead, you've blindly sent emails to us that we've had to read in public, to which we had no discord to. So thank you for coming on for the first time ever.
I have to request.
Overall, tone is extremely negative.
I logged into other meetings, but there were people that you weren't even recognizing. There were people that had something to say. And you elected whoever was making the decision, whether it was Maureen or Ed, you weren't allowing those people to be heard.
We listen to everybody and allow them to be heard, just as the same as we've allowed you. You choose to write extremely negative emails and correspondences to us, and that's your purview and prerogative? And I'm excited that you were able to actually come on and face the music this evening.
I am very happy that I had this opportunity because.
Great. You've had it every single time for the last year.
I would, I can say the same thing about you, Matt. You have been very disrespectful to a lot of people.
Okay, so we're not taking disparaging comments. What I have done is I have opened up the, I have co-opened up the communication during open time for the public for anybody who's there. I have told one member on the last two years of being chair that they're not going to be using our select board meeting to say disparaging comments about other town employees. And so I did not censor anybody. I simply said that you're not going to use our select board meeting as a vehicle to say disparaging things about other town employees. There's a more appropriate way to do that. So if the board is agreeable, I will let Erica Flood, who is the president of the East Hampton Media, speak. Are people okay with that? Okay, thank you, Erica. Oh, you have to be unmuted. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's a problem.
On the way.
That's okay. Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to let all the members of the select board know that this is a service that we do offer. And we do this in, our other contracted community, as you know, is East Hampton. And so although we withdrew our offer for this election cycle because of the communication that we would like to work together with the members of the select board for future election cycles, Jen Ramsey did send an email, which I hope all of you received. And in that email, we've included an archive of national examples from candidate statements from across the nation. So this is just a service that is in alignment with our mission as a public access television station. So just, I want to clear the air that it's not because Nilda is on our board. It's something that Jen and I had discussed. We wanted to see how the candidates forum went and to see if there was an interest from other candidates. We did also hear from Joy Piper as well. She was interested in the recording. But it came pretty, it became pretty obvious that in the timeframe allotted and the communication that was going back and forth, that for this particular cycle, we withdrew that request and that offer. But I would like to work on this moving forward with the town, to be able to offer these services. They're free of charge to everyone. And for us, it's just a matter of freedom of speech and access. So I would just love the opportunity to discuss that in preparation of your next election cycle, so we can make it a much smoother rollout. And thank you for your time this evening, just letting me explain that to you. I'm always available and you have my contact information if you ever need to follow up with me outside of a meeting just to discuss things like this, you know, for planning purposes in the future.
All right, thanks a lot, Erica. And you probably heard my comment then about possibly being available when we actually do nominate another board member?
Yes, and Ed has invited me to come back on the 15th. So just let me know how much time you'd like. I can give a quick overview of that nomination process. And I did send Ed an update today of where we stand with the current folks who stepped forward. So I'm hoping he can disseminate that information to you. And then I'll be back on the 15th to answer more questions about that process as well.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead, Matt.
Erica, just as a matter of policy, I mean, the public access TV, I mean, me as a citizen of one of these towns that has access to this, I'm allowed to utilize the services that you provide for whatever legal reason that I would like to, correct? I mean, there's nothing standing in the way for any candidate to do this individually on their own, is I guess what I'm saying. Because I can produce and publicize any, not any content that I want, but content that I want to come up with and develop with you folks, right? I mean, or is that not?
Well, there's a distinction here, Matt. The services that we offer during election cycles, our policy is if we offer it to one, we have to offer it to everybody. And that's free of charge. Now, if you are a member of East Hampton Media, as a member, you are welcome to use equipment, training. We can educate you on how to produce and we can do limited support services to help you produce. So there's a little bit of a distinction. We're not necessarily a paid-for-hire production company. Really, our mission is about education and access. And, you know, part of our goal now is really to help people understand that that is our role in the community. We offer these gavel-to-gavel meetings live. That's part of our contract. But in terms of coming in and producing content, we do offer that service to our members. There's a sliding scale fee there for membership. There's a lot of support. And like I said, all the equipment that you need, including you can use studio space. But we're not here to hire on a per-hire basis for these candidate statements. So again, if we offer it to one, we offer it to everyone. And because the communication went sideways pretty quickly and it just didn't seem like we would be able to coordinate this in the timeframe that was going to make sense for this election cycle, we've pulled back. But it's very important to me that your community knows we are here to support you in this matter. And part of that goal is to help people feel empowered to run. Running for local office can be very overwhelming and some people don't even know where to start and how to get their name and their voice out there. So being able to offer these services for free is also just helping people to feel empowered that they have a voice, that they have a way to get their name out there as well. So for us, that's the larger mission here.
How do you distinguish, like, you offered to do a East Hampton Media taping, live taping and recording of a candidate's forum that was done by a sort of neutral party in Southampton that's been doing it since 2014? So I guess my question also was, what was the need for then doing an East Hampton Media-produced candidate forum? Not that, I'm not talking about whether anybody has the right to or not. I'm just saying that.
It's not, it's really a little, it's literally an individual recording. So previous to, previous to my membership on this board, I ran for city council in East Hampton. And I was also afforded the opportunity to record a video. I could have declined if I wanted to. But for me, that was a great service that I thought, why not use this opportunity to get my voice out there? Okay, so what we did was to reach out to everybody who's currently running for a seat on select board and say, if you would like this opportunity, we'd be happy to record it. Now, it's, we don't produce it. We simply record it, edit it, make sure the candidate is happy with it and then air it on the local channels and give you the file to share.
Even though you had just provided that service?
Yeah. It's just a public.
Forum?
It's not a forum. It's a one, it's a 150-word.
No, 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 I said what you had just done on Channel 191.
It's in addition to.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, in addition to. And again, it's equal airtime to everybody. So generally, the instructions, I believe, are, I believe it's a 150 or it might be as much as 500 words. But it's a very short statement that you are to write yourself. You know, you show up and our staff just helps record it. It's a quick edit because it's just one statement. And then the file is there and it's available to share. So this is not in any way to replace the candidates forum. It is just an added opportunity for those folks who would like to take advantage. And again, there's no pressure to do it. You know, it's there. It's just an opportunity. So for us, just to be clear, we're just, we're about open access to everyone. So like I said, in future election cycles, I hope that we can work through a process where, you know, we can make this accessible and make it an option for folks and schedule it well ahead of time so that we're not scrambling in this last minute with this conversation. I just wanted to lend my voice to say, in the future, I hope we can plan better for this and make it available for other folks who might want to run.
Okay. Well, thank you for publicizing and recording the candidate forum, which gave every candidate an opportunity to have equal time and to answer questions about what their priorities were, introduce himself to the voters, and that is up on your website.
Yes, and I do believe that being aired almost every night at about 5 o'clock. So for anybody who has missed it, it does replay most nights between now and the election. So it's out there.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Does anybody else, anybody else in the public have anything they'd like to say? All right, then, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
I'll second.
Matt and then Francine, all in favor?
Just for mine.
Roland, Chris is saying aye, but she's.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And don't forget the town meeting, 9:00 AM.
Good night. Night, everybody. Take care.
All right.
Good night.